Okay, welcome tonight to our meeting, our pre-Valentine's meeting on the 13th of February. Let's get the meeting started at 5:34. Madam City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes ma'am, thank you. Mayor Kelly Krebs here, Mayor Potem Robert Parkhurst.
Present.
Councilmember Edward Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Jane Goss.
Here.
And Councilmember Christine Lo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Inspiration?
I'd love to. If you're able, please rise. Join with me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as I sit down here, I do see a Lunar New Year card and just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Probably could have had my inspiration around that, but I chose a different route. If you know me, then, you know, I try to focus on sometimes the seasons, but sometimes I like to focus on how great it is to live in a country like the United States of America. And kind of picked one of those themed around Black History Month. So as you know, February is Black History Month. If you've ever wondered why this month, well, Black History Month has its beginnings from a week, Negro History Week. And that coincided with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln, which was yesterday, February 12th. And Frederick Douglass, which it's my understanding Frederick Douglass didn't exactly know when his birthday was, but he celebrated on February 14th, which is tomorrow. Given the importance of these two men, I thought I'd borrow a few words from them tonight as we reflect on the importance of Black history in our nation. On July 1st, 1854, after Lincoln's been in the House, but before his presidency and before the Civil War, he wrote a fragment on government and he also wrote fragments on slavery. This was part of the fragment on slavery. Most governments have been based practically on the denial of equal rights of men. Ours began by affirming those rights. They said, "Some men are too ignorant and vicious to share in government." Possibly so, said we. And by your system, you would always keep them ignorant and vicious. We propose to give all a chance, and we expected the weak to grow stronger, the ignorant wiser, and all better and happier together. Frederick Douglass states in his famous 1872 speech, Self-Made Man, which was an essay as well as a speech that, as my understanding, he gave publicly many times. And it's pretty long, but I pulled a quotation out of that that I think kind of coincides with this theme. "The various conditions of men and the different uses they make of their powers and opportunities in life are full of puzzling contrasts and contradictions. Here as elsewhere, it is easy to dogmatize, but is not easy to define, explain, and demonstrate. The natural laws for the government, well-being, and progress of mankind seem to be equal and are equal, but the subjects of these laws everywhere abound in inequalities, discords, and contrasts. We cannot have fruit without flowers, but we often have flowers without fruit. The promise of youth often breaks down in manhood, and real excellence often comes unheralded and from unexpected quarters. The scene presented from this view is a thousand arrows shot from the same point and aimed at the same object. United in aim, they are divided in flight. Some fly too high, others too low. Some go to the right, others to the left. Some fly too far, and others not far enough. And only a few hit the mark. Such is life. United in the quiver, they are divided in the air. Matched when dormant, they are unmatched in action." So I share these quotes tonight because I have faith in the pursuit of our improvement. Some may call it progress within our great nation. When our government creates a framework that fosters equal opportunity for all, we unlock the potential inherent in liberty and freedom, paving the way for greatness to be obtained by countless individuals, leading to a better society for all."
Thank you. Appreciate that. We do have a agenda for the evening. Does anyone have any changes? Or if not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Great. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We had a closed session before the meeting. Mr. City Attorney, could you please report out from the closed session?
Mayor, the city council met in closed session to discuss performance evaluation for the city manager, as well as the city attorney. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Could someone please move to approve for reading resolutions and ordinance by title only?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, and we have our meeting minutes from January 23rd. Madam City Clerk, were there any changes?
Madam Mayor, we received an email from Mayor Potem Parkhurst requesting some non-substantive changes. They were mostly grammatical.
Thank you. Any other comments or changes? If not, if someone wants to...
Move to approve the minutes as amended?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, great. So now we are on to mayor and city council reports. Who would like to start?
Sure. I'll start.
Thank you.
So, back on the 24th, the Transportation Subcommittee met with representatives of the Met. The meeting was extremely productive. Some of you probably heard about it. The Subcommittee agreed to work on a significant change, well, changes, in Met policy which could bring back at least one bus line to our city. Details are being worked out, and members of the committee, the Subcommittee will have to appear and testify before the regional board to make our case formally, but the end of the meeting, I think both sides thought the prospects of success looked very promising. So, hold on to that thought. More later, more coming. In that evening, we had the Honors Dinner, and I was happy to join my council colleagues there at the dinner. Got to present the Wisteria Award to our Chamber of Commerce. Great evening all the way around. Congrats again to all the honorees, especially our New Citizens of the Year, Leslie and Barry Ziff. And then on January 29th, I attended my very first Library Board of Trustees meeting since I was appointed as the current liaison. I was received very graciously by the board. I don't have any real pressing issues to report on from the meeting that you're not aware of already, except that Public Works Director Yanez showed up with his thousands of pages of plans and demonstrated that to them as he did for us. And so when I know more in the next meeting, I'll report back to council. That's my report.
Mayor Potem?
So, like Councilmember Goss, January 24th was a busy day. In addition to, well, I had a meeting of the Energy Committee for the Clean Power Alliance. Nothing to report from that. I was also filled in for the mayor at the sanitation district meeting. Nothing to report on that. As usual, Councilmember Goss did a great job on the transportation meeting. The one thing I'll add is that, and I'll blend this together with the Honors Dinner, because I had the honor to give the youth award to Max.
Romero.
Romero. Thank you. And, you know, it was really thanks to Mr. Romero that we had the meeting. I said this at the Honors Dinner. Our staff tried to reach out to Metro multiple times. Meetings were rescheduled, meetings were canceled, but it was Max's persistence, and I think as a youth and as a member of the community, that got us the meeting there. And we had that meeting with Metro, and he came in very focused with a very clear ask, very clear follow-up. And we went through all this discussion, and then he brought us all back and said, "Okay, this is what we needed to do. This is what we want going forward." And it's very clear why he got the Youth Award of the Year, because of his focus, because of his passion, because of his knowledge. So, I want to thank him for his service on the transportation meeting, or Transportation Committee, and again congratulate him for his award. I also, for the Honors Dinner, I just want to thank all of the staff, the community services, and all they did to make that a wonderful evening. And for former Mayor Erizmendi for being our emcee. I also had a Board of Directors meeting for the Clean Power Alliance on February 1st. They're looking for a new executive director because the current executive, not executive director, excuse me, board chair, because the board chair is termed out, and that election will happen in March. On Feb. 5th, I was at the planning meeting for the Wisteria Festival, and it sounds like we're off to a great start on planning on that, so that's really great to hear. And then on February 9th, with the mayor, Councilmember Lo, and Councilmember Garcia, we had a brush clearance tour that was organized by Captain Bertrand where Cal Fire in LA County came. We got a chance to see some of the high-risk areas in the city. Got some incredible feedback from Cal Fire in LA County, some ideas of where we can get some funding to be able to help with brush clearance and ideas on evacuation zones and on fire breaks and all kinds of great things. I want to give kudos to Captain Bertrand for his vision on this. I'm excited to see this go forward. I think it's a pressing thing we need for the city, so kudos to him for leading that, and I want to continue to support that going forward. And with that, that is my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Lo?
On February 1st, I attended the Planning Commission, and it was a well-attended Planning Commission meeting. And they were going through the, moving forward with the Meadows track map that was approved to move forward with some contingencies towards the city council, so that'll be coming up in the future. On February 4th, I attended the presentation of the Playhouse for their 100th year anniversary. They had the silent films, and they also had a beautiful gala at the Row Restaurant, which was very exciting. I also attended the brush clearance, and it was very insightful and a lot of new information that's come from our state in particular, but with the last history that we've seen with different areas. And so it was enlightening to see the changes that have come to our environment and how to pre-plan instead of being reactionary. So that was great. And then I recently joined, on February 8th, the Public Safety Strike Force with the League of Cities. And the purpose of that group is to look at current legislation that can help our public safety for our citizens, both with things such as theft, business theft, personal burglary, as well as issues with the opioid epidemics with fentanyl and laws that will help with our responses to that. And then the last part of that is the public safety of our personnel, our fire, and our EMS and law enforcement in helping securing their safety.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was also at the Honors Dinner. Again, kudos to former Mayor Erizmendi in emceeing that. It was a great event. It's great to see just a fraction of the volunteers that are from this town there. We were able to honor those that serve our city, you know, ably, and we love what they do. It was a great event. There was a senior commission meeting on February 1st. I had a work engagement, so I could not make that meeting. But I did follow up with Vice Chair Holland, just to get an update on the meeting, what was talked about and what the issues are. Chair Kroc was not at the meeting. She is still recovering from a surgery, so we wish Chair Kroc a quick and speedy recovery. But just some highlights from the Senior Community Commission. They had a great turnout for their annual holiday lunch. I think somebody reported it out regarding that last time. There were 53 people there. The excursions that they like to do are on hold for about another month, but they're planning on going forward with excursions as they had last year. They had a lot of excursions last year, as you recall. I don't see Vice Chair Holland here, and I think he was going to come to public comment and make some comments. So I don't want to steal his thunder, but since he's not here, I know he wanted to speak on issues of the Older American of the Year Award. Wanted, he's not coming. Okay, thank you. He wanted to make sure that the residents knew that you can still fill out an application for the Older American of the Year Award, and we'd like to hear from individuals. And secondly, come June 30th, there will be two vacancies on the Senior Community Commission. And we want to encourage individuals to apply for that. They're also discussing issues, as we kind of discussed last time regarding the Planning Commission, of possibly coming up with a recommendation and considering things such as expanding back to seven, and also possibly getting rid of term limits and things of that nature, just to kind of figure out, you know, how they can navigate some of these issues with getting individuals on the commission. So those are things that are important to them, and they were talking about, and of course Jackie Porcola gave an update on the Transportation Committee as well. Also, on the 9th last Friday, I attended the event with Cal Fire in LA County, as many of us did. It was a five-hour meeting. We did tour, and kudos to Captain Bertrand for that. We did tour the canyon. We toured Stone Gate, and we toured the Meadows area in Bailey Canyon to get their opinions on some of those issues. I think it was a very, very good meeting because, you know, we're so unique, especially in the canyon, that Cal Fire got to see a little bit. And LA County was there, and that's important because LA County is the contractor for Cal Fire in our county. So it was important for them to be there. We had some great feedback on help. So fire mapping and all those other issues are super important to us as we're in the wooey, the wildlife, urban, or...
Wildfire.
I'm just going to say wooey.
Wildlife, urban.
Wildfire.
Wildfire.
Very important. We talked about some of the Cal Fire, they gave a presentation, talked about some of the Cal Fire issues and home hardening and those things, and the zero zone, Zone 1 and Zone 2, and how important those are. Zero is not something that, we invited them to come get a presentation, so I don't want to take too much thunder, but the Zone 0 is not something they have implemented yet, but they have found that with high winds, embers will bounce off a structure and fall within five feet of a home. And even some of the firefighters were saying, "My house isn't even up to this. I've got mulch up against my house, and I've got to harden my home after some of this realization." So, they said it's not a lot of work, but it's a little bit of work to get done. But I do feel that we're going to have a good partnership going forward, and I'm grateful for our personnel's leadership on that event. It was well-attended. Well-attended, all 12 of us fit in the van, and it was a great day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I will not add much because most of what I did was also already reported on, but I will say that at the Honors Dinner, I had the honor to present the George Mauer Lifetime Achievement Award to Diane Sands of many things, but most notably the Preservation Society and the amount of time and effort that she's dedicated to that. So much deserved award there, and that was just a really great evening all the way around. The chamber asked me to introduce the VIPs in the room, and I looked around and I said, "Who's not a VIP in this room?" So it was really just an amazing spirit, and it was great to see everybody who's done so much for our city. I was also able to attend the brush clearance operation meeting. I was here for the introduction and comments by Captain Bertrand, but it was not available to go to the, on the four-hour tour. So I appreciate my colleagues for doing that, and I'm really excited about his enthusiasm for this, and I think it's going to really benefit the safety measures in our city and benefit our citizens, given our, you know, ever-present fire danger. I do have a few announcements, one of which overlaps with something that Councilmember Garcia mentioned. The community service is, as he said, still taking nominations for the Sierra Madre Older American of the Year. The nominations are due by March 13th, and you can get those forms and submit your nominations to the Community Service Department. Also, the Senior Community Commission is inviting everyone to join their annual Valentine's Social tomorrow from 3:00 to 5:00 in the Harp Park House, so they will be serving champagne and assorted sweet treats. And then just to wrap up of our weather incident last week, Public Works did daily readings of the storm rainfall total, and in the four days of the storm, we came in just shy of 10 inches, 9.99 inches, which is quite, almost a season's worth of rain in four days. So, and I have to say, kudos to our Public Works staff and the city in general. We came through that storm with minimal to no, you know, flooding or damage. And a lot of that was due to the fact that Public Works was preemptive in clearing drains and making, monitoring areas of known, you know, flooding and known places where water sits. We did have a few incidents just by virtue of our saturated ground in terms of trees uprooting, but our city jumped on all of those things quickly. So thanks to everyone who was on alert for that and all of the pre-work that went into keeping us safe. We did not see nearly the same types of incidents that happened, you know, around the city, so we were happy about that. And that concludes my report. Just as a quick reminder, we do have a public participation code of conduct. I won't read it this week, but as everyone knows, it's generally that we would appreciate you not disrupting the meeting. And if you do make comments or otherwise disrupt the meeting, I will ask you to stop, and if you don't, we may ask you to leave. And with that being said, let's open it up to public comment for items not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Mayor, the city has recently invited a new member to the communications team. We have Thomas Holmes in the audience who wants to come up and introduce himself during public comment and just to say hello and be a face, so... Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Thomas Holmes. I am proud to be the new communications coordinator for the city of Sierra Madre. I'm here coming from Pasadena Unified School District. I'm very happy to be here. I cannot wait to work with you guys to make Sierra Madre the best city in Los Angeles County. So, thank you guys very much, and I look forward to working with you guys.
Great. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for introducing yourself.
And I understand you came to work a day early because we had the storms. You wanted to make sure residents were well-informed, so thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the next speakers are Alice Yao or Phil Yao, is how the card reads.
Good evening. I'm Alicia Yao. I live at 513 Syracuse Drive. Our house borders on the Monte de la Rosa and the Meadows Project. We've always been concerned about the fire, more so than the view. In fact, my husband came before the city council to let you know that many homeowners in our area has had their insurance canceled. The reason for the cancellations are because we are now told we are in a high fire zone. Loss of the open field due to the Meadows will present a problem for sheriff and the fire department as a staging area for emergencies. It's also a loss for a fire break for the surrounding neighborhood. It's very important to have the Carter ingress and egress for the Meadows Project. You could see what happened in Hawaii. The Maui fires showed how important is to have ingress and egress. People just abandoned their cars, and emergency vehicles could not enter the fire zone. The result was over 100 people dying and the entire neighborhood destroyed. The Maui fires also showed that cars in the neighborhood had problems. They burnt up, and they blew up and exacerbated the fire in the neighborhood. I don't think that the fire assessment done for the Meadows Project included cars in the neighborhood and abandoned cars in the event of an emergency. These cars add additional risk to fire as shown by the Maui fires. In closing, you, we want you to do the right thing, not the easy thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Yao. Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Howard Hayes.
Well, hi. I'm Howard, up on Sycamore Place, just north of Grand View, and it is always so great to see you again. You know, I was concerned about this article that appeared in the Mountain Views News last month. It was about an unexpected price tag of an extra $97,000 for last year's special election. I was concerned by the word "unexpected." Well, the city clerk in the article notes that printing and postage rates, but this was a full 30% over the original amount. Now, the harm here is not just the money, but it's the damage to the credibility of those that originally bring those figures, and that damage is hard to repair. Now, the article says it'll be paid by taxpayers. It also says, "Our city manager said it'll be paid for by the developer." So who's right? Our city manager or Mountain Views News, and who knows? There's background in the article about last year's referendum on the McMansions up in Bailey Canyon, but that wasn't the headline. While the expectation, of course, was that the vote would take place at the next general election at little if any cost, well, the decision to instead have a special election at considerable cost was a decision made by this council and this council alone. Now, Councilmember Lo says it could have all been prevented. Councilmember Goss complains that the money could have been spent on more productive things. Yes, it could have been prevented. Yes, the money could have been spent on more productive things had not council members Lo and Goss and the rest voted instead to spend it on a special election. Now, over 1,100 constituent signatures were submitted to put the referendum on the ballot. Yet Councilmember Lo and the Mountain Views News refer to an individual on a steering committee who somehow bears responsibility for the whole thing. You know, a rushed special election is what the developer wanted. We get that. The developer issued threats so you'd have cover for your votes. We get that, too. But, you know, you can defend your vote or apologize for it, but don't pretend that that vote didn't happen. And don't try to blame the consequences of that vote on anyone other than yourselves. You know, you own those votes for the special election and whatever the cost. Take ownership. That's the least we expect from those to whom we afford the privilege of sitting where you are now. And as I said, it's always great to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Deb Sheridan.
Good evening, council members. Deb Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive. I would also like to draw your attention to the misrepresentation in the January 13th Mountain Views News reporting councilmembers' remarks about spending over $400,000 for the measure M special election. Barbara Skousen, in a letter to the editor, the following week corrected this error. She said this was a shining example of democracy in action, and I agree. The council chose to rush the election to May 9th. Our city council could have waited until the next regular election at no additional cost to the city. Hmm, let's see. We already have our ballots for the March 5th election. What was the rush? The out-of-town developer wanted a May 9th date and promised a major reimbursement if, if the early date was selected. Council agreed to this arrangement, knowing full well there were costs that could better be spent elsewhere. Please set the record straight as to why this costly early date. And I would like to also remind you that you represent all of us residents, including the nearly 2,000 who signed the petition to get the measure on the ballot. Thank you very much. And I would say the same thing. Please own up to who's, who did this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sheridan. Metamayor, the next speaker is Mr. David Gordon.
David Gordon, Sierra Madre Playhouse. So we celebrated our 100th anniversary on February 3rd with a silent film festival and a party. I'm very grateful that Assemblyman Lowe came along and presented the playhouse with a certificate of recognition, which I thank you very much. As you know, we are becoming a performing arts center, not just a playhouse. And I want to run through the programs just between now and the end of February, so you get an idea of what that means. So next Saturday at 2:00 in the afternoon, as part of our music series, we're having something extremely unusual, Sierra Madre, and that is Hindustani classical music with two musicians, one of them playing the tabla. And on Sunday evening, the second in our jazz series, this time with Michael Garvin, the noted drummer. Los Angeles is full of brilliant jazz musicians and we're giving them a place where they can be listened to with respect rather than a bar or a club. Our first jazz of evening on Sunday was a complete sellout in spite of the fact that it coincided with the end of some strange game that was taking place somewhere with rules more complicated than cricket.
And different this year.
The following weekend, we're starting our comedy series with a woman called Suba Agawal. And the following day, we're having a classical music concert of a Baroque group. And that is being held on a Sunday afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00. And you arrive, you'll be greeted and at the end of the concert, you'll get a glass of champagne. So that's just what we're doing in February, to give you an idea of what we're, what we're planning to do. I repeat, as I have often at this occasion, we need to refurbish, remodel the playhouse. And I will be looking to the council for some help in doing so. And we'll be starting one of those campaigns, I think. I need some help. If anybody got a good lobbyist who has influence with the council, I'd let them know who they are. So that's what we're up to at the playhouse. We've been there, the same building for 100 years. And that's, I think, one of the few buildings in the world that was showing cinemas in 1920, showing films in 1924 and still, still showing films in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Metamayor, there are no other speaker cards. However, the city staff did receive one email from a member of the public that was forwarded to the city council for consideration. Thank you.
Okay, moving on in the agenda, I think we will start with our presentations. And I think up first is a representative from Athens, Mr. Warner. Oh, there you are.
Good evening. My name is Christian Warner. I'm the Senior Vice President of Compliance at Athens Services. It's good to be back here and thank you for inviting us here to give this presentation. Tonight, I'd like to talk about a few topics. We'd like to talk, I'd like to talk about the January 1st annual rate adjustment that just passed last month. Like to give you an update on the organic services that we're providing in the city. Talk a little bit about the canyon residential area and then finally go over some of the special services that we provide here in Sierra Madre. So the January 1st annual rate adjustment, January 1st is the normal time to do an annual rate adjustment in this contract. This contract started in 2010. And there are three parts or three sections that basically you add the three up together that give you your total rate adjustment that just occurred here in January 1st. And so the first part is what we call the service component. So the service component of the trash rates gets adjusted and is based on the Consumer Price Index, which is an index that is published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And so this is a prescribed index. This CPI percentage change has averaged just about 2.15% over the last, or over 11 years, from 2010 to 2021. And then over the last three years, it averaged 6.45% each of those three years. And this is consistent with the inflation that we've all seen here in our country these last few years. Then we have a second component, which we call the disposal component. The disposal component of the rate, which is tied to the Shoal Canyon landfill gate rate, the disposal component touches on disposing the trash. So we pick up trash, mixed waste, organics, whatever we pick up, and we take it somewhere and all those costs that are involved in that. This gate rate, a gate rate, just so you know, is the price per ton that you would pay at that facility. It's called the gate rate. This gate rate averaged .09%. So less than 1% increase during those same 11 years, 2010 to 2021. And then there, this gate rate also increased over the last three years by 5%, 8%, and then a huge jump of 56% just this last January. And I'm going to talk way more in detail about that. We're going to come back to that. Finally, the third piece of the January rate adjustment that we experienced here was an extraordinary rate adjustment, which I'm also going to talk some more on, which had to do with the Senate Bill 1383 programs that we put in place last year. So Shoal Canyon, Shoal Canyon landfill gate rate is the prescribed index in the rate adjustment formula that was put in there in the 2010 contract. And this probably made sense back at that time because back then, that is where most of the mixed waste and even green waste was going from Sierra Madre. It was going to the Shoal Canyon landfill. So it would make sense to adjust your disposal component by that gate rate. So as that gate rate changed, then the costs that were, that the hauler would then be hit with would be adjusted by that gate rate. However, due to industry laws that we have seen over the last decade, the waste can no longer just go to the landfill. Even green waste can no longer go to a landfill. So we take the Sierra Madre mixed waste to a MRF, a material recycling facility, MRF. We take your organics to an organics facility where it's turned into compost and mulch. And then we take your CND, which is construction and demolition debris, to a special CND facility that is specifically just for diverting CND material. That facility is an Athens facility in, up in Los Angeles, and it's currently receiving about an 83% to 85% diversion recovery rate, which is one of the highest in the, in the industry. So about, I think it's been about five or six years ago, I, I approached the city manager and the Public Works Director at that time about this Shoal Canyon landfill gate rate because Shoal Canyon is a county sanitation-run landfill. It's operated by them, it's run by them, they choose the gate rate. It's out of our control, it's out of your control. We're at the mercy of whatever they say. So I talked with the city manager to propose a change, saying, hey, why don't we change the index that we use for the disposal component from the Shoal Canyon gate rate to something else like the MRF gate rate or the landfill that we use where all the trash goes after it's processed. Or what a lot of cities do is they just have their entire rate is adjusted by the CPI as opposed to breaking it up in different components. So we talked about those different options. The decision at that time was to remain with the prescribed formula as it absolutely was advantageous to Sierra Madre, to the rates. As, as I showed you before, that gate rate was barely going up. And I'm going to show you some details here in a chart on the next slide. And in all transparency, we also did, I also did approach the city manager at that time because it was actually hurting us. We were taking all of the waste and the debris to other places that weren't the Shoal Canyon. So as those other places were going up 3% to 5% in cost each year, our disposal component of the rate was either staying the same or barely going up by that .9%. Now, this is something that we can always meet and confer, analyze, and even change, this disposal component. This is not something that has to remain the same. We have now experienced this huge increase in the Shoal Canyon gate rate that is not anything that anyone wants to see. So again, there are options that we can discuss and, and look into during this year. Again, use a different index or just get rid of the disposal component all along, all, altogether and just use a CPI index for everything. And so that's something to think about. Now, I do want to show you some historical data for Shoal Canyon and the CPI as it pertains to your rate adjustments every single year going back to 2010. So 2010, the contract specifically says that the disposal component is based on a gate rate, which was $48.99 at that time. Each January, as you see in this chart, along the left-hand side shows the rate adjustment. The column that says SC with a dollar sign means the Shoal Canyon gate rate, so the actual per-ton rate that we would pay when we dropped off the tons there. The Shoal Canyon percentage is the percentage change in the gate rate each year. And then the CPI percentage represents the CPI percentage change that was applied to the service component of the rates. So as you can see, Shoal Canyon's gate rate actually only changed slightly in those first few years. They had that one big bump in 2018 and then it remained almost the same for another three years. Didn't really start going up until the last couple of years, which again, is consistent with the inflation that we experienced here in our economy. In 2024, Shoal Canyon gate rate went up 56%. And they are finally catching up to the market rates in the area, other landfills, and they can no longer keep that gate rate low, which we believe is something that they were doing for a number of years. Again, we have no control over Shoal Canyon. We don't know exactly what their thought process is, other than that's, that's what happened. But their gate rate now is consistent with other facilities in Southern California. Now, what does this mean? This means that Sierra Madre's rates did remain lower than if they would have used CPI for the entire rate adjustment. So by having that disposal component all the way up till 2023, it was advantageous to your rates. However, in 2024, because the way that the formula is written in the contract, it, it was a huge spike. And so this disposal component was one of the reasons for the large rate adjustment that was just experienced. The final piece of the annual rate adjustment has to do with the extraordinary rate adjustment. And this is necessary to implement the programs that were put in place for Senate Bill 1383, which are required by the state of California. Senate Bill 1383 is an unfunded state mandate requiring all cities to comply. And this means that it trickles down to all of us as rate payers, no matter what city we live in, in the state of California. I won't read each one, but these eight bullet points are the programs, are the specific programs that we, Athens, are now doing for you to ensure that you comply with Senate Bill 1383 every single year. There's a lot of programs. It's very expensive. It's very costly. And so when we were talking with you and going over all this last year, that was when we, it was necessary that we have an 18% to 23% extraordinary rate adjustment to the rates to account for these programs. And we agreed that we would spread that over two rate periods. And so the first half of it was in 2023 and the final half just occurred in January 2024. This is the final phase in, if you will, of the extraordinary rate adjustment. So if we are to look ahead a year to January 1st of 2025, that will be just the normal annual rate adjustment without this extraordinary in it. When you add the service component, the disposal component, and the extraordinary rate together, rate adjustment together, that gives your total annual rate adjustment for January 2024, which explains why it was high this year. Moving on to organic services. So we are now providing all these programs. We did deliver all of the new bear-resistant organic containers to all single-family homes and multifamily complexes with four or less units. And just a reminder, this is part of what we like to call the Athens Advantage. We agreed, as we worked with staff, that we would procure these barrels, deliver them at no cost to the residents or the city. There is nothing in any of the past couple of rate adjustments that accounts for these barrels. And I just want to make that clear tonight. We have heard a lot of good comments about these new organic barrels. And as always, we, if anyone ever has any questions on how do they work, what are they doing, we do ask people to just please call us if they have additional questions. We did send out literature last year that explained them, but they are out there. Now, the commercial accounts and multifamily with five or more units also have to source separate their organics. They don't have these special bear barrels, but we did deliver to them organic barrels for them to put in their organics. And just as a reminder to everybody, organics now includes all of your typical green waste, yard waste, landscaping waste, and now it includes all of your food waste and food scraps and organic material. It's all mixed together now and it's all taken to a facility that's turned into compost. We're actually going to talk about compost in a little bit. The organic barrels have been provided and the service is being performed in the commercial area. And there is temporarily no organic barrel service charge to those commercial and multifamily accounts while we work with staff, staff to resolve some billing questions that have come up regarding these organic containers to the commercial accounts. So that'll be something that we've, we've agreed to put those, put that billing on hold until we come to a resolution to that. Moving on to the canyon residential area, this is an area that we at Athens refer to as a hard-to-service area. And the reason for that is because And the reason for that is because of the narrow and curvy roads, the parking that makes everything really tight, the low trees, the wires. It makes it extremely difficult, many times almost impossible, for a large trash truck to navigate through. And so what we did is we obtained an exemption from CalRecycle to provide service in this area with what we call one-pass service, as opposed to a three-pass service. Most of the residents in Sierra Madre have three containers, and three different trucks go and pick that material up. But in this canyon area, we do pick it up with one truck. CalRecycle said, as long as you take that load to a MRF, so that it's completely processed, to remove the organics, to remove the recyclables, then, and that's why we were able to get that exemption. This, taking that entire waste stream and going to the MRF with that waste stream is more expensive than if you would just take your normal mixed waste to the MRF, because it's mixed with all of that stuff together. It takes more effort, more machines, if you will, to pull out the things that are inside of there. So it is a costly service. However, it does also result in less trucks on the road. So we have less truck traffic. We have a slightly lower carbon footprint in this area because of less trucks. And so there are pros and cons of this, but it's working, and we've been doing this for a while now. Athens has agreed to provide all additional blue or green barrels at no cost to these customers. We've also agreed that if there are any customers who have unused barrels, and they just need to get rid of them for whatever reason, we will come pick them up, again, at no cost, and remove those and either reuse them somewhere else or dispose of them for recycling. Moving on to some special services that I wanted to talk about tonight. There are some things that were part of the last amendment that were included in our services that we provide at no cost to the city last year, along with the Senate Bill 1383 programs. One of those is that we provide now a household hazardous waste and e-waste drop-off event once per year. And the first annual event just happens to be coming up on Saturday, March 16th, from 8:00 AM to noon, and it's going to be located here in the rear lot at City Hall. What this means is residents can bring their HHW and their e-waste, drop it off, and then what we do is we dispose of it in the proper places and where it needs to go. And so this is an annual event that will occur. The other thing that was also added in the last amendment is that we will now be doing two compost giveaways per year. All of the organics that this city separates and puts in those organic barrels is going to American Organics, where it's turned into compost, and that compost is then brought back to your city and for the residents to use. And so there will be two compost giveaways per year, and we work with staff each year to designate the date and the location and the marketing for those events. Another thing that you guys enjoy in this city, which has been here since 2010, this is just a reminder, is the bulky item pickups. I do urge people to use these. I actually live on a street with eight homes, and I tell everybody every year, use your bulky item cleanups. They're there, they're free, they're at no charge, and they're not, if you don't use them, you lose them. So each resident gets four per year. And any multifamily complexes with six or less units, each unit gets up to two per year, bulky item pickups. If you're a commercial account or a multifamily with six or more units, there is a charge for that service. Now, moving on to Sharps collection and medical waste. These are related, even though they're slightly different. Sharps collection is basically your sharp, your needles, anything sharp that has to do with medical conditions. And we do provide a mail-in disposal kit for a fee, and that fee is on our rate sheet. And what we do is we have this kit mailed to the home. The resident places their used sharps and needles in that kit, and they mail it back to a place that then disposes of them properly. However, there is recent Senate Bill 212, which provides free in-person or mail-in disposal kits for anyone to use. And so this is, I guess you can say, a state government service that we're now starting to promote and let all of our cities know about. You can go into a Walgreens or a CVS or certain places that will have this service, or you can call in and have a kit sent to you for free. And so really, this would really remove the need for anyone to call us and pay a fee for it when they can do this for free. Same with medical waste. On our website, we provide information that shows how people can dispose of their medical waste. And this is also covered in Senate Bill 212, where they can do this for free, go to places and get rid of it for free, or get a mail-in kit and dispose of that for free. I have a slide here that shows just a snippet of one of our pages on our website that talks about all the different types of household hazardous waste, what it is, what is defined as HHW. And in the bottom right-hand corner in red is medication disposal. And so it talks briefly about what that is. And at the bottom there, there's a QR code that you can scan that then the resident can learn more about this and also find where some of those free disposal sites are. With that, I was, I wanted to just show you on our website, if I can just have a couple more minutes, to kind of do a live interaction here on our website to see how a resident can get to that spot. So this is our website here, and if you, if you go to athenservices.com, you'll come to this page. And if you just hover up there above the resources, and then you go down to that first one, outreach materials and resources, and click on that, that takes you to a page where, as you scroll down, there's a lot of different categories that you can look at, from recycling, on what you put in each barrel. If you'll just stop right there, James, go up just a little bit, back up. One more section, I just want to talk about this. This is a section, for example, where we say, what goes into each of your barrels? What does green waste mean? What does mixed waste mean? And you can click on these red boxes that will then allow you to look at the different literature and mail pieces that we use in all of our cities. And you can actually view them or print them out yourself and use them. And then if you'll scroll down, okay. So this is where you get to our recycling cheat sheet and our hazardous waste cheat sheet, if you will. And this is an area where a resident can see what this all means. What goes in each barrel? What is HHW? And how does the medical waste work? So if you scroll down a little bit from here, you then click on, oh, go back up. You click on the red oval under LA County, cheat sheet in English or in Spanish, and you can click on that, and it'll pop up. And now you can actually print it out. You can save it to your own laptop, if you want, in PDF format. And here's, this is just an example of the education we provide. You can also do this if you go back to the main screen, or go to the top there, James, and if you scroll over the residential and then go down to choose your city, you click on that. You go down to click on choose your city, you go find Sierra Madre, and now you're going to come to a page where, if you look on the left, there's all those different menu items of things you can navigate now that are specific to your city and to your contract. If you need a bulky item pickup, you can schedule that online, or you can call our customer service agents. You can actually schedule that online if you don't want to call in to the telephone. There's all these different things. There's Senate Bill 1383 information. There's also information on HHW and medical waste here. And so this is, this is a really interactive website that we have. It's fairly user-friendly, and there's a lot of things that you can click on and use for yourself if you ever, if you ever need to. So I just wanted to kind of go through that exercise with you, just so you can see what that looks like. And I would love to answer any questions that you might have.
Who would like to start? I suspect there are questions.
I guess I'll just jump in, just to make sure I have an understanding. You said CPI, but it is the waste and trash CPI, I'm assuming.
It just changed to the trash CPI, which is, it's still published by that same Bureau of Labor Statistics. Yeah, traditionally, it was just the regular CPI for all of us, regular people.
All items.
Bread, cereal, milk, all items, yeah.
Okay, yeah, and that, that number does comport with trash CPI, the 6.45, I think it was.
Yes, that does, just that last, just that last one.
I have some questions that I don't know that you can answer, but you're in the sanitation business and I'm not. But I did spend the last 12 months as a director of this sanitation district. So in those 12 months, I don't recall ever seeing, within our agenda packet, nor did we ever discuss as directors, the increases for the tipping fees or gate fees, I think you called them.
Gate fees, tipping fees, same thing.
Because I think there would have been some, some mayors that would have voiced some opinions regarding such a high increase at Shoal Canyon. So I don't know if you know how those are decided upon, because you would think the directors would have say on those. And I know you don't, you're not, you don't work for the sanitation district, but you probably know more than I do, so I just, what's the process there?
You know, I don't know the actual process that they go by. We aren't involved, little bit of a conflict of interest, if you will, if we get too involved with county sanitation in that way. But we do know that they are faced with similar things that we're faced with for the facilities that we own and operate. They have costs that they have to, that they have, that they're incurred with, rising costs. They have laws that they now have to comply with, and they have to make changes to their facilities. There is one thing about landfills. We don't own a landfill, and so we're not, I would say that we're not completely familiar with all the intricacies that are involved with owning a landfill. So there are things that we just don't know about. So I'm not sure how they go through that process, as far as deciding when and how much.
Can I just follow, because I have a very similar question. So this fifty-six percent increase, do you know why? I get, I mean, it's, you showed us the history, going back a whole long ti, you know.
Right.
You know, it's a clear outlier in that, why, do you have any idea? You're in the industry, I know you don't control the landfills, you don't have a responsibility for it. Why could that go up so much in one year?
We think, because if you looked at all the previous years, they were practically zero percent every other year. So while the rest of the market, all of the other landfills in Southern California, and even in the nation, were probably going up anywhere from three to six percent in their gate rates every year, Shoal Canyon, for some reason, was keeping their gate rate low. That might have been to attract business, you know, to keep their rate lower than others, to get more revenue, to get more business. I do remember when Pointe Hills was still open, they had some subsidies at county sanitation that they would use to subsidize their gate rate. And they were able to keep their Pointe Hills gate rate low because of the revenues that they had. But once they, once those ran out, they had to then raise their gate rate. So I think if you were to take that Shoal Canyon gate rate and go up three to six percent every year, then by the time you got to now, you wouldn't need that fifty-six percent jump to get it up to market values. You probably would have been there anyways. So I can't, that's what we're assuming that they did. And they're finally just, they can no longer, they can't keep it low any longer, yeah.
So you did mention that it's getting up there with other gate rates, but the only, only other data point I have is within the sanitation district. And that would be the Agura Hills, and that one's at sixty dollars and thirty-two cents for a ton. You know, relative to Shoal Canyon at ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents. So I'm just, I think landfill, I don't know if they're going to do the same thing in the near future, but again, Calabasas landfill in Agura, sixty dollars and thirty-two cents per ton for municipal solid and inert waste. Shoal Canyon is ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents per ton for the same product. But that's neither here nor there, just so you know, because you did say that there, so there can be even with everything else, but obviously that's much lower. I know it's not our watershed, so it really has nothing to do with us, but it is another data point. And I, no, no dispersions towards you. We had the benefit of zero percent increases for a long time, when you, as a company, were incurring some costs. So I'm not saying we're all innocent in all this. But the thing that concerns me is that, when was this increase known? And we had a subcommittee that was agreeing on, or trying to figure out what the rates could be. Just if, I don't know, just if we would have known this was coming around, maybe the negotiations would have been different, maybe this all happened post-negotiation.
It did. We didn't know about it until the very end of the year, which is when we do this rate adjustment. There's been years where we've gone past January 1st, still waiting for Shoal Canyon to announce their January 1 gate rate, and then we wait until after to adjust the rates. So we knew right at the very end, definitely post.
But I will say Shoal Canyon rates are now up there with MRF rates, very close.
And when I talk about other rates, other facilities in the industry, I also mean outside of county sanitation, other privately-held landfills all over the, all over the Southern California area.
And what is DART, D-A-R-T?
DART is Downy Area Recycling and Transfer.
And that's owned by Athens?
That's owned by county sanitation. It's operated by us right now. So all we do is operate the facility, and it's strictly, right now, just a transfer facility. So waste from different areas will go to that place, like the trucks will go there. And then larger trucks will then take that same waste to their ultimate destination. So it's just a transfer facility right now.
Okay. So you're, but yeah, it says sanitation district no longer operates that.
Right, but they still own it, and they still kind of set all the rules, if you will.
Yeah, I think that's really all the questions I have. And I'm, I'm happy that you're willing to kind of come back to the table and renegotiate for our residents. I know some of them were quite surprised at some of these increases. And I'm grateful that you put to rest that those cans that everybody got was not part of the increase. That was all, that was all part of the SB 1383 organics program. And there's been a lot of misinformation out there on social media. And thank you for representing the truth out there. Because that's, that, we, those council members that worked on the contract worked hard to get that hammered out. So thank you for being amenable to that.
You're welcome, yeah.
That's all I have for now.
So a couple things. One, I think, is a huge increase. I wonder if maybe we could have been notified prior that this was coming up too, because instead, we just get the reaction from everyone's bill instead of not knowing, if we knew in December that this was going to be increased in January. Instead, we just get the reaction from our residents instead of knowing, hey, by the way, maybe we can put something out or at least know what's going on instead of just being a reaction to the increase, if it's that dramatic.
Our letter requesting the rate adjustment typically goes out, like this, this last time it went out at the end of November. And then we will always work with staff through the calculations, double-checking the contract, we check and balance each other. But it was very, I would say, last minute that any of us knew what was going on. We pretty much sent our request to the city as soon as we could.
Because I noticed in January, with a lot of even our multi-residents, multifamily residents, they were mistakenly given a accidental charge of 136.62, which is for an organics cart weekly, and then they were charged that. And then they were also charged an increase of thirty-three percent in their bins instead of the twelve percent that we notified them in our presentation and in our agreement. So it was lower, the rate that it is currently is what we agreed upon. But when we presented to the residents, we said that their initial rate was two hundred and nine, seventy, it's two hundred and nine dollars and seventy-six cents. And commercial was two hundred and eight and eighty-four cents. But then a lot of our residents said that their bills were at one seventy-six dollars and ninety-six cents, which jumped thirty-three percent instead of twelve percent, which was, you know, harsh for them. And then of course, the rate for the pull-out trash weekly went up. And then, of course, that means that our taxes go up, our UUT that we have goes up, and all the other taxes go up because the price goes up. So I think maybe we all could have done a better job at communicating that this was going to happen in January, because we just celebrated a rate increase that was reasonable for the public. And then for some people, it was like, whoa, I didn't know that. And it would help us to explain to them through this meeting now. But I think we've dealt with a little bit of reaction instead of maybe we could have, maybe prevented that a little bit more.
And if I can respond to that, it's interesting, because when we did announce the extraordinary rate adjustment back in 2023, and the city went through the Prop 218 notice, at that time, you're able to say, this is the extraordinary rate adjustment. Come January 1st, it'll be that, plus whatever the annual rate adjustment ends up being. And so it's hard, you can't put a number, and then all of a sudden, it's a high CPI, and then it's an extraordinary disposal for the reasons we've talked about. That's the hard part. The, the piece about the organic barrel charge, that was the thing that I mentioned that we did suspend. because we're gonna talk about that and work through that.
And we're still waiting for a few reimbursements from some of our customers.
Yeah, we did, there were a hand, a group of customers that did receive an organics charge incorrectly, for sure. And we reversed those charges right away, and we took that charge off their invoice forever. And then there's this other group that we've suspended that charge, and that's where we need to meet and confer and figure that part out.
And can you explain, like, who that is? That was one of my questions, is who is it that's getting an extra charge after we've already given them a charge for SB 1383?
So it's specifically commercial accounts, and then multifamily with five or more units.
And why, I mean, why is that not included in the fees, the increased rates for 1383?
Well, the way, the way that it's worked with all of these amendments that we put in place with all of our cities is, there's a rate, extraordinary rate adjustment that accounts for all those eight programs that you see that I laid out, all the things that we have to comply with. Then there's also an organics barrel charge, that's been part of the rate sheet for years. Because we've actually had to, I should say, commercial businesses have had to comply with an organic container for years. Not many of them did prior to this, but they were supposed to do it per AB 1826. And so we provided those rates in the rate sheet for a number of years, we provided that service. And so what's happened is those rates that are still on the rate sheet now got assigned to all these new commercial accounts that now have an organics barrel. They're now getting assigned to that rate that's been in the rate sheet all this time. And so that's the confusion that we've got to work through.
That rate sheet is something that would have worked for residents as well, and we were able to catch it for residents, but we didn't catch it for the commercial?
No, because residents are different, because residents have always had their green barrel as part of their three container system. Commercial's never had that green barrel, ever. Now they have this new barrel, we have to get a new truck to keep that separate from their mixed waste. So there's this extra cost, and that's what we're working through.
And didn't we talk about the options for those businesses? Somewhere around, like, we had been talking about, because I remember these conversations. I remember that we had deliberated on them, but I don't think it was, it wasn't, it was not clear to me that that was gonna be an extra cost. So somehow, that got miscommunicated in the negotiations. So, I appreciate your, as Councilmember Garcia said, that your willingness to open this up and to be transparent on that.
Because we appreciate that as well. We need to talk about that and figure that out. Stephen is here, and Becky, they'll be, will be together as we meet with staff, because we're all involved with the city.
You have any more questions?
I have a question, just on your feedback from this pushout. We've had mostly positive, of course, of course, there's some issues, of course, with the new tool in any home. Same thing happened when we went to recycling. Have you had many issues that you've been able to navigate through from hearing from residents? Bins are too big, like in the canyon, but won't happen now, but, or people that have disabilities, like they need smaller bins. Smaller bins been sent out, like, how's that part of everything going?
You know, whatever the requests have been, we've been able to handle them. I would say, probably, maybe one of the more difficult things that we deal with is on the commercial side, which is you've got these commercial accounts that have not been doing this for years. They want to know, why do I have to do this? I hardly generate any organics, I'm a mom and pop store, all I do is get some cardboard boxes once a week. You know, what's going on? And so there are actually some exemptions that are allowed through Senate Bill 1383, that exempt these customers from having to get this organic container. And we have recycling coordinators that go out once a year and meet with these accounts. We help them fill out those exemption forms, we turn them into CalRecycle for you, and they're exempt from having to comply with this law. Now, the city still has to comply with those eight major components of the law, but just those individual businesses don't have to have that barrel. But we do have different sized barrels, down all the way to 35 gallons, even up to two yard bins if someone has that much organic waste, like, maybe some of these major restaurants could fill up.
Residential issues like that.
But not in residential, yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, or I think, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Madam Tenor?
Yeah, I did have one. Can we go back through, can we get up on the website again? I'm still, there's one thing I've been confused about, and I just, I need help, I'm trying to find it. So, I've been trying to figure out, you know, I've got expired Robitussin and Nor- or the, what was it? The fake Sudafed, the Nor Sudafed. Show me how I get to figure out how to dispose of that.
Okay. So the easiest way is to go to the resources at the top.
Yep, I got there.
Right there. And then go to the outreach materials and resources, click on that. And as someone starts to scroll down, they'll see different things and different types of materials. And you'll eventually, about one third of the way down, get to this area, and you'll see the household, or the hazardous waste.
But that one doesn't have medical on it.
Right, and I just noticed that too, because then, when you go down a little bit more and you click on the actual PDF of it, it does have the medical, so yeah, you're right. You don't see it at first, but then, keep going, then you see that little medical piece. And so this is the area.
So if I'm on a computer, how do I, because I see the QR code.
Yeah.
So now, how do I get from the QR code to that? So do I have to, so I have to whip out a phone and take a look at it?
You can do that.
Well, how would I do it if I don't whip out my phone?
If you don't have a phone, then you call us, and we'll tell you the information that that QR code takes you to, which is anywhere that has the free disposal for your medication.
Okay, so I go to that QR code. And that QR code takes me to a, an LA city. It takes me to an LA County page, and it says that the next disposal, the next DEA national takeback is October 28th. And then down below it, it says that you can take it to the household hazardous waste temporary collection events. So, that's taking, so it says, do not flush medications down the toilet or put them in the drains. Dispose of the medications for free at LA County Household Hazardous Waste Collection Events and Permanent Centers. I have been to two, two household hazardous waste events, and they will not take them. And so, you know, after the second one that I went to, down at the Rose Bowl, whipped out my phone to try to find it, I still don't know where to take this stuff.
And they won't take it?
They, I've been, two events, they won't take it. So, I can't navigate to it on a computer. When I navigate it on the phone, it's taking me to a household hazardous waste event. So I'm at, I'm honestly, I'm at a loss what to do with it. I mean, I don't want to flush it down the drain, I don't want to put it in the garbage, but it's been sitting in my garage now for over a year. And I need your help, help me figure out where to go with it. And I don't, and the reason I'm doing this here is, I imagine there are other people have the same type of thing. I'd like to make it easier than have to, you know, on the website, there isn't guidance there. And on the phone, there isn't guidance, so it, can you help us get something that's a little bit more straightforward or where to go with it? Because it's not clear.
Yeah. I'll tell you this, this morning, I sat in a training session from 9:00 to 1:00 PM. And our training was from our Sustainability Director of Athens Services, who actually introduced us all, a group of 30 people, to this Senate Bill 212. This is something that we are, we don't have it on our websites, as you see. We're just now starting to put it out there for our cities to view, like residents like yourself. The medical waste part of this industry is something that we, Athens, have never been a part of. Because of the disposal component of it, you have to have all these special licenses. But what we're trying to do is provide as much of the education and the places to go to as we can. And so now, we're actually, we're actually getting all of this stuff because people are required to do it, because it's new Senate bill. And so, you don't see a lot of it, because it's not there yet. It's now becoming available. Our websites are probably changed, our website is changing every single week. We're adding information, we're including new information. The best thing to do in your situation is to call our customer service, and you'd be actually, actually be able to speak with someone who then could have that information in front of them, because it's not on the website yet, and then they could give that to you.
So let's, I'd like to make this part of the conversations with us fixing these other things, because I think it's important. In a previous city I lived in, I could walk down to the police department, there was a bin there, you shove it in the bin, it was taken care of. But, since I've lived here, in the years I've lived here, it's, I've never been able to figure it out. So, I'd like to make that so that our residents know how to take care of that.
I think that's probably the easiest solution, is to have actual sites in the city for people to drop it off, like even batteries. As you saw, we do the HHW and the e-waste drop-off events. We are set up to do those types of things, we've just never been set up to do medical waste. So if there are drop-off locations in the city, that could be discussed. We would work with the staff to help in that area. I don't think that we would be allowed to use Athens-owned vehicles to actually transport that material, but we'd have to figure out who the right vendors are to do that.
I know it gets, I mean, for some of the stuff, it's easy, right?
Yeah, some is easy, some is difficult.
Like the over-the-counter stuff, and you get in the sharps, I know it's more difficult. You get in the DEA schedule, drugs, I know it gets more difficult. I still think it's, and I apologize, I know I've gone on much longer than I should, but I'd like to try to find a solution to this.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia, do you have any questions?
That's covered it all.
One more quick thing that kind of has to do with abnormal pickups. So with our bulky pickups, we had, I don't know if it's a contingency or a resident that contacted us and asked about the equity of this. So if we only do bulky pickups for single residents and multifamily residents that are under six, doesn't that leave our lower income residents without bulky pickups? So where's the equity in that? It's basically saying that if you don't, can't afford your own home, we don't, we won't pick up your bulky pickup, but if you have money and you can afford your own home, we'll do that. So we're kind of struggling with the equity in that.
That's definitely something we would be happy to address with the staff again and bring that back. From my experience here at Athens, I believe that it's probably not that reason for it. It's, I think what the industry sees is with commercial, and with the multifamily complexes that have the greater number of units, you do see a greater amount of turnover in the units. And a lot of times, as people move in and move out, they do a lot of illegal dumping. And as opposed to doing the right thing with it, if you will. With commercial businesses, it's kind of along the same lines. We don't want commercial businesses just getting rid of their trash, their bulky items, just because. And it could be stuff that is extremely heavy, or something that's dangerous, depending on what their, you know, business is, that we just shouldn't be handling. So it is, your program is consistent with other cities, where they provide it for free for the residents. It is consistent, but it's definitely something that we can discuss for all multifamily. If I'm hearing you correctly, it's, can we treat everybody the same regardless of what the unit count is?
Especially because they're, like I said, their increase went, you know, across one of our streets, that's more of a rent-controlled, not really rent-controlled, but a lower income neighborhood. Their increase in their bills went up, like I said, 33% for their bins, versus the 12%, which we stated in our example. So if they're paying that much more this upcoming change, but we're not providing them with the same amount of services as the guy next door that has three or four units. Thank you so much.
Got that, yeah.
I just had one question about what you're seeing on enforcement. I mean, I have to say, anecdotally, people I know in other cities, you know, when I talk about this type of stuff going on, they give me a blank look, you know, that's not happening in our city. And I know this is statewide, you know, I go to, into LA, you know, either into my office, or at an event, like UCLA for, and I don't see anybody separating anything. So what is your sense of, like, the actual participation, you know, locally, that would be your experience? And then, in terms of enforcement from the state, is, are we still kind of in a, I don't know, you know, kind of ramp-up period? I just don't get a sense that there's much going on here. I feel like we're doing a lot, and we've asked our residents to do a lot, and I just don't get the sense that this is happening at a scale that it should, if this is a statewide mandate.
It's definitely increasing the participation, the ton, the organic tons that are being separated. It's all slightly increasing, I will tell you that. It is going slow, and so, it's all about education and outreach. And that is why part of Senate Bill 1383 requires you, which now requires us, because it's in the amendment, to do those annual site visits. It also requires us to send out the education outreach at least once a year, if not more often. It requires these different touches. One of those touches is what we call the lid flipping, to check the contamination, so the enforcement part. CalRecycle is a little bit slow on their enforcement of jurisdictions. You guys are way ahead of the game, I will tell you that. But as far as enforcement goes, we are allowed now to do enforcement at the residential level. So as our lid flippers go around, and they actually, once a quarter, go out and they randomly look at, lift the lids, take pictures if they see contamination, and we work with those customers. If there's habitual contamination over three times within a calendar year, they can be assessed a fee, because we have to now treat their barrel, the contents of their barrel differently, because of the contamination. So this is the first year now that CalRecycle allows that level of enforcement to occur at the residential level, and the commercial. So you'll start to see some of that out there. We're not looking to ding people with these fees, we really aren't. We're looking to work with them when we see contamination.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so, kind of bringing it back to residents, and I think you're making good distinctions, because you're not the bad guy, you're the one that's implementing services that we don't provide from the city. And it's a state mandate that has no funding.
Right.
So, that being said, when that first increase hit commercial accounts, when I'm talking commercial, I heard from quite a few owners of multi-occupancy dwellings, so over four would be a commercial account. Your, I think your example was saying like a business. But also, if you have five or more units and it's residential, you're also a commercial.
Yes.
So, yeah, they got a very, very big surprise. I think their bills were in the, just over $200, $225, and then it jumped to over $400. And that was the can and all those other things. So I received quite a few phone calls. I think, I think it was around seven within a week or two. And six of those were actually residents. So a lot of our residents actually own some of the apartment buildings here in town. So they're not like outside landlords or anything like that, so they live here. Their concern was, a lot of them said, look, I understand the pilot service. I don't expect one of my residents to take a can to the street. If I have to pay for pilot service, I understand that. I understand it's a state mandate. But what I'm afraid of is that, you know, I'm a landlord, and I can't go out and police everything that my resident is putting in the can. So their fear is these audits, or, you know, lifting the lid, and their residents aren't complying, then they're gonna get hit with a fee. So I don't know, I think the solution is MRF the three yard bins for these commercial account, residential accounts. I don't know if you can do that, or how expensive it would be, but.
We already are.
Okay.
So we're already taking all of the mixed waste from the commercial and those multifamily that have bins to our MRF. Now, if they have an organic container and it's contaminated, it's still going to our MRF to be transferred then to American Organics. So it actually goes through two levels of being able to sort out some contamination before it gets processed into compost. And again, if and when we do see that contamination from the lid flipping, it's not gonna be until the third time that we really get serious with them. So the first couple times, the first three times is gonna be, hey, Mr. Property Owner, can we, can we work on this? And then that gives the property manager an opportunity to go talk to his tenants, and maybe say, hey, we need to start sorting out better, you know, the hauler is looking in our lids and checking, checking it twice.
Yeah, I mean, but that was their concern, it's like, I've never had to do anything like this, now I've got to act like the trash police. And we can't forget, the reason we started this is, we don't want to encourage organics in the dumpster because of the bear issue we have here. You know, everything's quiet right now because of hyperphasia, and, you know, the bears are sleeping. But, if we had buffets of bins with lots of food in it, that would be an issue. So we don't want to encourage it, but I'm encouraged to hear that the MRF is an option. So, just, you know, just to reiterate, a lot of those multifamily commercial accounts are residents. So, you know, we're tasked to be a bat for them as well, and hopefully we can find a reasonable solution.
Yeah, we will.
Thank you.
I know we will.
And just to say, your staff, the ones that are here tonight especially, have been very responsive, very open, have their numbers and their cards, but residents don't, right? So they, they call us up or City Hall, and we become the complaint department, but that's what we signed up for.
Us too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate you coming and taking all these questions and taking the time with us. It's really. It's really heartening to see, you know, when we, we're really our partners in this, and I appreciate all of that, all that you do and all the transparency that you're providing.
Thank you. All right, good night.
Okay, that was presentation one. Can we have the Chair of our National Resources Commission come up and give her presentation? Chair Ryan?
Hello, good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council members. My name is Vicki Ryan. I'm the Chair of the Natural Resources Commission. And on behalf of fellow Commissioners Dr. Petzert, Dr. Evans, Commissioner Rodriguez and Commissioner Lim, I'm here to provide a brief summary to you on the activities of the Natural Resources Commission. First and foremost, we'd like to recognize James Carlson for his exemplary work and dedication to the commission this year. Highlights from his past year activities include working towards an update to the Wildlife Management Plan. We will be bringing this update to council here shortly for providing updates to that. We also did an analysis and consideration of the reach codes to enhance the city's efforts towards electrification. This may require looking at vehicle charging equipment for new buildings or seeking to make other renovations. We're currently taking a break, the commission is currently taking a break from this activity due to some litigation that's pending between the California Restaurant Association and the City of Berkeley and the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. We're also reviewing updates and announcements regarding some of the transportation work that's happening in the city. And appropriately, we are looking, reviewing the new organics requirements from Athens. So it was appropriate that he presented right before I did. We're also looking at consideration and recommendations to update the City Municipal Code on the prohibition of gas-powered landscape equipment. We've also received presentations from Southern California Edison and the Clean Power Alliance regarding their energy-related projects and topics. And one of the big things that we are looking at this year as well is public outreach strategies. How do we engage with the city, community and other commissions regarding what the Natural Resources Commission is doing? One of the things we did last year was Earth Day, so we're looking at possibly doing that again this year as well. The commission appreciates all the support from cities, especially, like I said, Mr. Carlson, and we look forward to another productive year. And any questions?
Anybody have questions for Chair Ryan?
I do. Chair Ryan, have you talked with anyone at CPA about the CRA lawsuit?
We have not talked directly to them about this, no.
Could someone, could staff or someone talk to them? I've talked with the CEO there, and they think that there are ways around the CRA lawsuit that are very clear. And they've actually got resources, they may, I think they've got draft codes and actually staff to help with it.
Yeah.
I'd love to see, I appreciate, you know, wanting to be careful with litigation, and I really, really appreciate that. But I encourage you to take another look at it because I think there's a pathway through, and this is something I really would love to see in this calendar year.
Yeah, we can take that action to go ahead and look at that.
I appreciate that, thank you. And thank you for all your efforts. I really do appreciate it.
Any other questions? I just want to thank you and your commission for all the work that you do. I do want to say that we have, as a council, gotten lots of inquiries about the gas-powered tools ordinance. And so I mean, to the extent that that is a priority, that seems to be a priority for many of our residents. So I just wanted to pass that information along.
We'll be bringing that to council as well in the future.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
City Attorney, would you like to give us our third and final, is that right? Third and final legislative update?
Mayor, as you stated, this is the third and final legislative update. This one will be focusing on bills related to public works and public safety. So Governor Newsom had issued Executive Order N seventy-nine twenty, which requires a hundred percent of medium and heavy-duty vehicles in the state to be zero emission by twenty forty-five. The Air Resources Board adopted its own advanced clean fleet regulation, which requires local agencies like our city to have fifty percent of vehicles be zero emission vehicles beginning in twenty twenty-four and one hundred percent to be zero emission by twenty twenty-seven. AB fifteen ninety-four creates an exception to that where a city can go and consult with the California Air Resources Board to point out why a gas-powered vehicle may be necessary to respond to foreseeable events. Foreseeable events include severe weather, wildfire, natural disasters and physical attacks, where maybe an electrical vehicle wouldn't be appropriate. Next slide. SB six seven six, so under existing law, the city is barred from prohibiting drought-tolerant landscaping, synthetic grass or artificial turf on residential property. Existing law was enacted in twenty sixteen to promote landscaping alternatives that use less water in response to prolonged drought. However, researchers since revealed that synthetic grass and artificial turf raises other environmental health concerns, including microplastic pollution, chemical runoff, lack of recyclability or reusability and exposure to PFAS. SB six seven six restores the city's ability to restrict or wholly prohibit synthetic grass and artificial turf installation on residential properties. And SB six seven six keeps in place the limitation on the city's ability to limit the use of drought-tolerant landscaping using living plant material on residential properties. So I suspect you may see a proposed ordinance from staff that is, that may prohibit synthetic grass and artificial turf. I know management analyst Carlson was excited about this one.
Also conveniently timed with our Natural Resource Commission update.
Next bill. AB fifteen seventy-two phases out the use of potable water to irrigate non-functional turf. Non-functional turf means ground cover, surface, sorry, turf means ground cover surface of mowed grass. Functional turf means grass located in a recreational area or community space. Non-functional turf is turf that's located in a permanently enclosed area, street, right-of-way, parking lots and medians. So it's that grassy area in the street median or, you know, around a tree in a parking lot. According to staff, the city of Sierra Madre does not irrigate any non-functional turf, so we are in full compliance with this. By January one, twenty twenty-seven, the city as a public water system must revise its regulations, ordinances or policies to include this requirement to customers, including any compliance certifications. Because as noted in that chart there, the city of Sierra Madre needs to comply by twenty twenty-seven, but by twenty twenty-eight, private institutional, commercial and industrial properties need to comply with this. And HOAs, common areas for homeowner associations, need to comply by twenty twenty-nine. So per this state law, by January first, twenty twenty-seven, our water department needs to begin educating members of the public about their duty to comply.
Are we the enforcement agent or is it still at the state level?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'm not sure who the enforcement. All I know is that we have an educational responsibility. Enforcement, I'm not sure about. I'll follow up with you, Mayor.
Yeah, that would be good because we're not well set up to enforce.
So just so I'm clear, the area between the sidewalk and the street, starting in twenty twenty-eight, if that's private, it cannot be irrigated for turf, is that right?
Right.
But lawns could be.
Well, not residential. It's institutional, commercial and industrial.
Okay.
It wouldn't be your, it wouldn't be your right-of-way.
Got it.
Homeowners associations, not.
Yeah, it's okay. So it doesn't ever get, so it just doesn't get to residents. Thank you for that clarification.
Is that, that's accurate? I saw a pause there. So what about turf, lawns for residents?
Lawns for residents are exempt.
Okay, yeah.
It's, but we don't, yeah, okay, never mind, good.
Next slide. Mitigation impact fees, also known in this city as facility, public facilities fees. Local governments approving development projects can require applicants to mitigate the project's effects by paying fees. This is usually collected before we issue building permits. Next slide. AB five one six, so as you know, the city adopts or the city council receives an annual report from the Director of Finance regarding mitigation fees collected, the balances, what they're being used for, et cetera. The two points in red here are new. So these are additional reporting requirements that are being imposed by the city. Next slide, or on the city, next slide. Additionally, we have to provide a notice now to the payer upon the pulling of building permits and the paying of these fees. And we have to notify them of their right to request an audit of accounts and to provide, and their right to receive a written mailed notice every time the city council reviews this annual report that the Director of Finance provides. These, we also have to upload to the city's website, these annual reports. They are currently uploaded, but I've talked with staff, and so we have a draft notice form, and we're going to consolidate the annual reports with the part of our website that talks about what all the fees are. So they're all on one page. Next slide. Under the Mitigation Fee Act, currently someone can request an audit. An audit request may include the following information: whether any fees or charges levied by the city exceed the amount reasonably necessary to cover the cost of any product, public facility or service. And they've added these two new things that can be inquired into. And this, so we hire an independent third-party auditor to do this audit, and the auditor will be evaluating these three questions. The two new ones are, when the review generated by a fee or charge is scheduled to be expended? Because we collect these fees, we have to use them in a five-year period. And when the public improvement is scheduled to be completed. AB five one six clarifies that the audit requirements do not apply to the city's fees related to water connections, sewer connections or capacity charges. Those are not mitigation impact fees. Those are different kinds of fees that we're authorized to charge.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
So in terms of this requirement to trace essentially when the revenue generated by a fee is scheduled to be expended, is this like literally tracing the dollars? Or is it more the fact that we expect to generate a hundred thousand dollars in these kinds of fees in twenty twenty-four and by twenty twenty-nine? You know, we expect to expend them on X, Y or Z based on our budget? Or is it, you really have to trace, like this dollar from this fee was spent on the Sierra Vista playground on, you know, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four?
So there are three things at play. You have your capital improvement plan, which contemplates the capital improvements that mitigation impact fees can be used for. Once you collect those, and so that will tell you how much we're going to, that capital improvement plan plus the fee study is going to tell you how much in fees we're going to collect from everyone and what those fees will be used for. When those fees come in, we have to account for when they come in. And they'll come in in a, you know, let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars just comes in. We have to use, we have five years to use a hundred thousand dollars in this specific fund for that specific capital improvement that we've identified in our capital improvement plan. And the Director of Finance provides you a report annually on how many, how much in funds we've collected, where we are in this capital improvement, if we've collected enough funds to begin that project. If we haven't begun that project, when we will begin that project. And so we do account, to answer your question directly, we do account for it. I don't know that it's, I don't know that we can so specifically say this dollar for this dollar, but we know how much money comes in and we know how much money has to go out within five years.
So that is part of this audit, is the capital improvements that go out is part of the mitigation fee audit?
The audit will make a determination whether or not those fees have in fact gone out. And it'll try to trace those funds.
And who does the audit?
An independent third-party.
And we do this ourselves, or this is something that's done by a payer probably who's going to ask for an audit, correct?
Right, correct.
So expanding on that, I know we have fund balances and all these, you know, the Quimby fees and all these other fees. Is this five-year rule a new rule or has it been a while so?
It's been in effect. City staff is aware, and we are focusing in on this.
Okay, good to know.
Thank you. Any else?
One point worth noting right before I get off of mitigation impact fees is there's a very, very big case before the United States Supreme Court debating the legitimacy of mitigation impact fees. It's called Sheets versus Eldorado County. Basically, the argument there is that Mr. Sheets is claiming that mitigation impact fees are an unlawful, are an unlawful exaction under the Fifth Amendment's taking clause. If the Supreme Court agrees with Mr. Sheets, it's going to call mitigation fee acts as a concept into question. So we don't know what the impact of it will be. But experts in this field suspect that the Supreme Court will determine that it is some form of exaction. And so this is, it's probably going to make a significant, there's probably a significant change coming to municipal finance in the future if the Supreme Court does in fact conclude that way, that it's an unlawful taking.
So I'm thinking of things such as roads and sewer connections and things of that nature. Are there any, or water connections, you know, bringing a water main to an area? So these fees kind of help offset those things. Is there any law saying that everybody has the right to that if you build? Or can we, maybe it's not a fee, but you have to pay for this. I mean, I guess it is a fee, but it's, it'd then be a direct fee instead of an aggregate pool fee. Are those legal?
Right, yes. So we can tie it directly to, like I said, you need a sewer main extension, for example, in order to build your home, so you can have access to sewer. We can charge the applicant for that, and we often do. But these mitigation impact fees contemplate big infrastructural projects. So without those funds, it'll likely have to be covered by the general fund, special taxes, or we just don't service those, or we decrease our services to account for that capital improvement need. So to be determined, more on that once the case is published. But that case is being argued in this session of the Supreme Court. Next slide. Concealed carry laws, so we've talked before about the case of New York State Rifle and Pistol Association versus Bruin. That was a Supreme Court case that determined that New York's concealed carry law was unconstitutional because it afforded public officers too much discretion. Even though that was a state, a New York state law, California had a similar requirement for its concealed carry permits where the applicant or the decision-maker that issued the permit would make a determination regarding whether or not there was good cause. Good cause is likely unenforceable because it provides too much discretion to that decision-maker. So what the state did is they adopted SB two that replaces the good cause standard with a disqualified person standard. This relatively, what it was, it was a very simple law regarding concealed carry permits, is now a sprawling, very big law that lists specifically who is disqualified and where you can't have a concealed carry weapon. This was challenged right away in May versus Bonta at the district court level, and the district court invalidated some of the provisions, not regarding who may carry them, but where they may be carried. The district court in joint enforcement of the prohibition against carrying concealed weapons in amusement parks, stadiums, libraries and hospitals, saying that the state couldn't make a justification for not having concealed carry weapons at those locations.
And that is a change, right, from what it first was published as when we saw it last year?
This is not Bruin. What I talked about last year was the Bruin case. This, what I just talked about is the May versus Bonta case. This is going to the Ninth Circuit Supreme Court on appeal.
Private entities still have the right to say you can't if you're in an amusement park or in a stadium.
Correct.
Is the procedural posture of this May case, is it, did it invalidate it upon issuance of the opinion? Or because it's now on appeal, is SB two still good law as written?
SB two is still good law. So they've, the Ninth Circuit has stayed the decision at the district court level. But the trouble for the city here is that before, all these permits would be. Uh, but the, the trouble for the city here is that before, all these permits would be processed through the, through the county. Now it's on the city's police department to process these permits and we really don't know how to process them. Uh, if SB two, the law that outlines processing these permits has been called into question. So we're, we're hopeful that we'll get some clarity from the Ninth Circuit.
Although, if you're saying that the May decision called into question the where, not the who, do we have a lot of where issues here? I wouldn't think that we, I mean, we have no amusement parks or hospitals, or do we, do, does our, our, do our, is our code really, is, is it really implicated by the May decision if it's sp- those specific areas?
So, so the, the, when, when they issue the permits, we haven't, I'm, to my knowledge, we haven't issued any permits yet, so we've stayed actually the issuance of all permits. But the, when the permits are issued, they're gonna include conditions of approval. And we need to figure out what are lawful conditions of approval. Uh, and so I know this is something that um the police staff is, is looking into. And they're, and they're working with uh police associations on this point.
But other entities have, have issued permits in our surrounding area?
I, I'm not aware.
Okay.
I'm not aware.
Thinking about this law and you brought, brought the back backlog issue. Let's say somebody filed a, a permit in December twenty twenty-two and it was still outstanding. Uh, this law comes into effect, would it still be the good cause because they applied early? Or is it, does it not, is it not retroactive?
It's not, it's not retroactive, so the, whatever the law is at the time, we are considering the application is what we would apply.
Okay.
Are we, if we are putting a stay on processing applications while this works its way out, which may take quite some time, because who knows where it gets appealed and who knows what else gets challenged? Do we, are we open to challenges about our process and not timely processing under the current law?
Possible.
So we need, we need to not necessarily, we need to ta- think about whether or not we wait to get clarity because I suspect there's not gonna be clarity for some time.
Correct, yeah.
A lot of it is a staffing issue. It was hard for us to, and it's new for us, that's why a lot of them got backlog.
No, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm saying if we've stayed it to like wait for this to sort out, I, I suspect that that's not gonna be a good excuse. I think we're gonna have to make a decision without full information.
The, at, at this point, I know s- there's a staff member assigned to this who's taking the lead. And I believe he's waiting on clarification from, I forget the name of the organization, but the one that circulates the regulations for police departments. Someone else knows, but we're waiting on clarification from, from that uh agency.
Fair, fair enough, yeah, I mean, as long as we have rational explanation, I'm.
It's worth getting an update.
Mayor Captain Amos is available if you'd like an update.
Sure.
Good evening, how are you?
Thank you.
As far as uh for the regulations right now, we are, um, we're not currently processing any applications as of this point. Uh, we're waiting on, uh, one of the organizations that we reach out to is the California Police Officers Association. They um work uh very heavily with a bunch of different California law enforcement agencies. Uh, and we're working with them to get clarification on this particular law. Um, I know we've, uh, we aren't fully processing applications, we have taken some in since January. But we have let people know that uh currently there's some litigation going on. Uh, that needs to be worked through, be, before we can fully issue the permit. Because if the law stands and we have to take it back, then, then there's some issues there, so.
Yes, let's be clear, personally, I have no problem waiting on these. But that is not my role in this, sitting in this chair is I, you know, my role here is to protect the city from liability. And if, you know, we, we're opening ourselves up to folks suing, for example, for, you know, failing to properly um process their application, you know, that's not something I think, you know, anyone wants. And so that's why I was asking the question, is that at some point, I think we're just gonna have to make a call because I don't think this, this subject area in the law is going to be resolved to anyone's satisfaction anytime soon. Um, so I think we're, at some point, we're just gonna have to make a decision about what we think is the current state and move forward. And then if things change, we'll have to react at that point.
Yes, uh, the Department of Administration is, is in almost weekly conversations uh with the staff member who is in charge of our CCW process to see where things stand at and see where we go forward. Uh, we do explain to individuals, hey, this is currently what's going on. And, and, and hopefully uh just let them know of everything that is occurring. Uh, but yes, at, at some point, uh, and the Police Department Administration will make a decision on uh in which direction we will go after consulting with uh the city attorney, so.
Perfect, thank you so much, anybody else have any questions?
I've now seen more signs out in um different cities. I was in La Cañada and I was going into a building that now says no carrying, no concealed weapon carry. Um, and I'm wondering if we should also start considering which public buildings we want to state, or is that gonna be?
Public buildings are exempt and that hasn't been challenged.
Well, maybe we should, I don't know, do we have to ever post those things yet? I mean, or should they know, they should know that?
It, it's a condition of their permit, whether people need reminders or not, that's a very different issue.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Next slide. AB sixteen thirty-eight, emergency response. Cities providing police, fire, and emergency medical services need to provide information relating to an emergency in English and all foreign languages spoken by five percent or more of the population. We've confirmed Sierra Madre does not need to comply at this time, but there, there will be a reassessment every five years. Next slide. AB two seven seven three. Requires a peace officer making a traffic or pedestrian stop before engaging in questioning related to a criminal investigation or traffic violation to state the reason for the stop unless the officer reason- reasonably believes that withholding that reason for the stop is necessary to protect life or property from imminent, imminent threat. It requires the officer to document the reason for the stop on any citation or police report resulting from the stop. And it requires the police department to include the reason given in its annual report to the attorney general. So as of January first, twenty twenty-four, this reporting obligation exists and it'll be made publicly available. And, and this attorney general reporting requirement is relatively new to, I think it began two years ago. So the attorney general is, is uh collecting this type of information in addition to uh uh police-related shootings and other types of information from every police department in the state. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, great information. Okay, on to our action items. Um, first item is our consent. Madam City Clerk?
Yes ma'am, thank you. This evening, the city council is being asked to consider two separate resolutions. Uh, resolution twenty-four dash ten and twenty-four dash eleven respectively. Twenty-four dash ten is the resolution approving certain demands. And the uh second resolution is twenty-four dash eleven adopting the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four update report from the city of Sierra Madre title six of the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four compliance program for transportation services. The recommendation for both these resolutions is to approve. Madam Mayor, that uh concludes my report.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
On my agenda, there's three items, did we pull the Vertex one? Oh, okay, I, I'm using outdated version, I apologize.
I have it down in this discussion. Yes, this discussion.
Okay.
Amber Alert.
Amber Alert.
We'll hold for the Amber Alert. Okay, does anybody have any, finally, on the council, any questions on consent? Item A. Item B? Okay, I will open this up for public comment on the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, presently, there are no speaker cards submitted for consent.
Okay, I will bring it back for discussion or motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar as, as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so now on to discussion. Um, I think the first item actually on the agenda is the item that was pulled from the pri- prior consent calendar relating to the award of a construction management service contract to Vertex Engineering Company. I believe we have the Director of Public Works.
Mayor Director Neville will be presenting.
Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, just based on mul- multiple factors in dealing with converting an existing uh structure, mid-century nineteen fifty-four structure to a new renovated and enhanced uh structure. Uh, detailed scope of the project has, has increased based on, on recent findings and possible future uh discovery. Uh, to be more specific, possible uh corrosion in nineteen fifty's steel. Uh, the fact that there is a, a beam that is concerning, that being uh, uh, a low-bearing uh center beam. Uh, it is something that uh has been brought to the attention of TSK Architects and Engineering uh and to myself. Uh, we originally went from a design uh bid delivery, uh design bid build delivery to do a method of construction uh MP delivery method, which is currently what's, what's being uh discussed here tonight. Based on the tight construction uh deadline, uh this includes uh the extension. There are many factors that, that are taken into play, weather, uh, union uh issues, unforeseen uh natural disasters, earthquakes, et cetera. At this time, uh, myself, along with TSK and uh support staff, feel this is the best uh path forward uh for the city to bring onboard a construction manager. Uh, we relieve uh the city of performing some of the project responsibilities and allow the contractor to team up with the, the design team and the city uh immediately. That concludes my presentation, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
So, um, and I, I don't recall the contract verbatim with TSK, but a- as you stated, it was a design bid build originally and now it's not. So, to me, then we're not paying for, there's services that we were paying for originally in the contract, we no longer need from them by hiring someone like this. Are, are we amending the contract or do we get a refund or a lower bill or what, what, what happens here?
No, sir, the, we're, we're not amending the contract. Uh, there will be, uh, there has been some discussions as far as um re, redoing the math
Okay.
to, to, to the, the total uh that is being originally uh agreed on.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, please.
So, um, and there's been some changes in costs as well. So, um, I noticed that we had budgeted a hundred thousand for this, we're spending half a million now. But there'd been some savings in some of the moving expenses or the temporary storage. Can you kind of just help us, uh, help me understand the budget impacts of this? Cause it's a large increase, but I understand there's other places that's been offset. And, and just, you know, does this have a, is it, tell us about the budget impact on it and, and how you're managing that?
Uh, yes, the cost is five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Working with uh library, librarian Regan, the, the grant will be um, what's the word I'm looking for here? Uh, bear with me one second here, sorry. amended, sorry. Uh, with, with the state, which then uh it'll add three hundred thousand with that amendment. We currently have a hundred thousand, which was originally uh put in place. So now we have hopefully an amendment dollar amount of three hundred thousand, which now takes us at four. And then an additional hundred and fifty thousand will be transferred from the construction portion of the, of the grant, which now puts us at five fifty.
And do you feel comfortable that, so do you feel this is the good value to make it, make sure that we've got a, a good building? And, you know, that, that it addresses some of those corrosion issues and some of those other concerns? That it's gonna make sure that we've got a safe building and cost-effective building?
Making sure is, is, is uh is, is a possibility. And uh what I mean by that is that market value price, five hundred and thirty-two thousand is a good deal. One of the highest bids that came in was at two point one million dollars for a construction manager. Just based on the expertise of Vertex, I feel comfortable that we are receiving a good uh service for, for, for the dollar amount. They will be uh dealing with uh logistics, materials, purchase, delivery, uh litigation, timeline, onsite, uh forty hours a week, uh contract manager. Unlike uh other organizations that may offer part-time service, uh limited uh hours per day, et cetera. Based on the proposal that was written uh by myself along with TSK, uh we were very specific on what we need uh based on, specific to this project. This is a one-time opportunity and the main thing that, that uh at times keeps, keeps me up at night is the timeline. And again, this, I cannot emphasize the short window that we have to deliver a high-quality product. Uh, based on the, again, discussions with Vertex, uh experience, I feel that we will get a good, a good bank for, 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 for the dollar.
Alright, thank you.
Just a quick follow-up, just to, to clarify. Um, when you say that we're gonna work um with the Library Foundation and, and the state to amend the grant, I think what you meant was that there're gonna be some reallocation internally as to where the funds are allocated. I don't think you meant which maybe, you know, I misheard, that would somehow get more money from the state, correct?
That, that is correct.
I just wanna make sure that was clear.
Madam Mayor, I, I do apologize.
No, that's, that's fine, I just wanna, I, I, I was pretty sure that's what you meant, but I just wanna make sure it was perfectly clear.
That is, that is the, actually, the area where, where I lost my space here in my, in my notes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions?
It was a little bit harder for me to, to um understand the compensation differences between, or the cost differences between the um, the proposals that came in monthly versus set rates. And I, I didn't have it set to how long overall that, that span was, and how does that calculate out? So how did you determine um which proposal to pick? Was it based on the rate, was it based on, how was that determined?
Uh, there are many factors that ta- that taken into play here, again, bas- based on what, what do we need? What does Sierra Madre need? And what do these firms offer? An organization can offer a hundred dollars a month. And, but that tells me lack of experience, they really don't know what they're getting themselves into. The possibility for that firm to say, well, we're gonna deliver ex, we'll, we'll be ready by, by, by this date. Or it opens up a bunch of change orders. Where then, down the road, eighteen months from now, twenty-four months from now, guess what? We're pretty much at the same level as other firms had submitted, five hundred thousand. Uh, a firm that delivers a full price upfront tells me, you know, exactly what they're getting themselves into. Uh, they're set on that price. So, limited amount of change orders, uh that tells me they're for ser- full service as far as, what I mean by that is litigation, logistics, onsite. I hope that answers your question, council member?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? I just have one related question, I mean, you, you, I know you interviewed three of the, the six bidders. Um, is there anything in particular that stood out from your um conversation interview with Vertex that, you know, led to your um choosing them as the, the, you know, the one that you felt was the most qualified?
Um, experience and the fact that the staff that they brought to the interview was the actual people that we, the city, will be dealing with. All due respect to the other firms, their staff is in Albuquerque, New Mexico. They are in New York, New York. I feel that the importance of this project, I need somebody there. I need somebody who I could have on speed dial and they could be here within the thirty-minute, hour tops. Based on the references with other, other municipalities outstanding across the board.
Okay, great, I just, just wanted to hear a little bit more about, about your criteria and what you found with them, so thank you for that.
And I'm very open to, uh, for those of you who are interested in actually reading the- And I'm very open to, for those of you who are interested in actually reading the actual proposal, let me know. I'll definitely share it with you. Or any additional questions you may have on my decision.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any public comment?
Madam Mayor, we don't, we do not have any speaker cards for the first item of discussion.
So, bring it back to the council for discussion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think this is vitally important. As we all know, that this building is very important to many of our residents here. As the director mentioned, this is one shot, and we got to do it right. You know, this idea came to me from a resident. I came to the city manager, and the city manager kind of fast-tracked this idea. And I think it's very important that we spend the money, even if it's out of our funds, to make this library right. Even with the extra time, I feel as though we still have a short timeline. I'm no construction expert, but it still feels, even with that extra time that our librarian staff were able to get for us, thankfully, it's still a short timeline. So, I'm, I trust the director on his vetting of applicants. He gave a sufficient explanation as to why he chose this one. And I'm comfortable with this for the long-term capital use of this building. So, I'm all on board for this.
Oh, and I just wanted to remind folks that might be familiar with, you know, our, the city's vetting of proposals. This, because it's a service contract, is not, professional service contract does not require the city to go with the lowest bid. And so, we had discretion to, you know, consider the types of things that we were speaking about in terms of experience and, you know, onsite ability and all of those kinds of things, and could factor those into versus just going with the lowest dollar.
And you contemplate the full-time salary of a project manager of a large construction project, and this is two years. I mean, it's not that far off, just full-time salary for somebody of that capability and human capital.
Yeah, I'm in support of it. I think we've got a, it is critically important. I think we've done good analysis. I like the fact that the person's local, they can be onsite to troubleshoot problems. So, you know, it's a significant cost, but I think it will pay for itself in the long term.
I'll say I agree with that. I'm not sure it's going to pay for itself, but I don't think we have any other choice at this point. We have such a closed window, we just can't keep going back and looking for people over and over again. I think our Public Works Director's judgment is to be trusted, and just got to go for it.
I was actually looking at other cities today, and they actually hire, you know, separate entities on their own. Like, we kind of tried to do in that they have people that can work for their city, and we can't have that possibility. And so, I think that the previous library didn't have such a long lifespan, if you look at its history. It wasn't meant to be a library still. And so, when we started looking at this so many years ago, I think the, it's so necessary to make sure we do it right this time and to make sure we get exactly what we want. And working with vetted companies that can provide that, that we can trust because they've already done this, really takes away that fear that we're going to get something that we don't want, or that it's going to be a miscommunication. So, I'm really comfortable with all the planning. Thank you.
Are you saying you don't think we had a construction management service company in the fifties when we originally built the library? Yes, I agree with everyone. I don't need to belabor it. So, I will request a motion if someone is so inclined.
I move to approve the consideration of award for professional services, construction management services to Vertex Engineering for the significant library improvement project number FC eight-two-three-zero-six in an amount not to exceed five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we have our last item for the night. Management Analyst Carlson, will you please come and discuss the city's strategic plan?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Krebs and City Council. The last discussion for you tonight is a consideration of the final draft of the Sierra Madre Strategic Plan. The City Council may approve the strategic plan with or without comments or edits and direct staff to simply remove the draft designation from the plan. City Council may choose to provide comments and edits to the draft plan and then direct staff to return for a final review. And of course, the City Council may choose to take no action. The development of this draft strategic plan is a result of many months of analysis and creation. It is also the first time the city's had a strategic planning process since 2016. In 2022, the City Council, city manager, and department heads met with strategic planning consultant to begin the formulation of a plan. After a course of interviews and discussions, the team created a new mission statement, a new vision statement, and new core values. It identified five strategic priorities to include with the new strategic plan. They are public safety, infrastructure and growth management, community enrichment, environmental responsibility, and organizational stability. The community was also allowed to provide their input, concerns, and priorities in various public forums held during 2023. Before you tonight is the final draft of this work product that stakeholders throughout the community has accomplished. I have the plan queued for the screen, and we can either discuss the detailed action steps in order, or I can jump to any of the items that City Council may wish to discuss collectively. I've also received some comments that have already been highlighted for discussion on the plan that I'll put up on the screen. And with that, I will just ask for the council's preference on how to go ahead with the review.
Well, let's see if we have any questions, perhaps about process. I don't know that we want to get into a discussion of the actual plan yet before public comment. So, is there any questions either about the plan itself or about the process? Okay, so it's...
Analyst Carlson, so let's just say, play forward for a second, that we approve it tonight. What's the process for, I think you said this was a living document or was in the staff report. The word "living document" sticks in my mind. What's the, let's just say that we approve it here. What happens then? You take the draft off, and is it, you know, is it bronzed and taken care of? Or what happens after that?
Well, staff is recommending a quarterly review by the City Council. For that reason, a number of the targets contained within the specific plan were identified as quarters, the second quarter of 2024, et cetera. So, there would be, I would imagine, if we call this the, let's call it the January review, and then we would come back in April, three months later, three months later, with the idea that the main update would happen every January of each year. I think it's a clean way to start a calendar year. You would also have a new mayor with their new priorities going forward for a major update to any strategic plan that we can do.
And what would you foresee that update looking like? What would you, you come to, you know, you're planning the presentation for the April meeting. What do you think it would look like?
We would probably go through the plan and highlight anything that is behind schedule, anything that is actually moving quicker than schedule, anything that really needs a major adjustment. Something came up that we would not be able to fulfill the plan as we had originally stated three months prior.
Okay.
Okay, let's open this up for public comment, and then we can bring it back for discussion.
Madam Mayor, we have one speaker card received this evening from David Gordon.
David Gordon, and Fairview Avenue. In the memo accompanying the plan, it sets out some of the background and some of the questions that were asked. What do you believe is the city's greatest strengths? What are the city's greatest weaknesses? What are the three most critical issues facing the city? I don't see the answers to those questions referred to anywhere in the plan, so it's hard to know what they were. What are the three most critical issues facing the city? I mean, I don't see any reference in the plan to the fact that, since we now have professional fire service and police service, we're going to see a huge escalation in the cost of providing public safety. How are we going to finance that? That is a strategic issue. I don't see any reference to that in the plan. Maybe it's not regarded as a critical issue. In the plan itself, we begin with the mission statement and a vision statement. The mission statement is, "Provide exceptional public services that enhance the quality of life, honor the character of our community, and maintain fiscal, environmental sustainability." Seems fine as a mission statement. But then the vision statement says, "Enhance the quality of life in Sierra Madre by providing exceptional public service," which seems to me kind of the same as the mission statement. And there is another vision statement referred to in the document as a result of the town hall meeting, where the vision is, "Sierra Madre will be a thriving, engaged community, balancing history and traditional with a progressive and innovative future." That sounds a bit more sort of visionary and a bit more interesting. I would suggest using that one rather than the one that's there. In terms of the actual goals, I'm absolutely amazed that under infrastructure and growth management, there's no reference to water or sewage. I kind of thought that there might be some strategic issues concerned with that. There's no reference to that. Finally, I went to all the public comment sessions, including the one which was basically an open day for Public Works, where I asked some of the people in Public Works, "What are your strategic issues?" And people said, "What are you talking about? This is just an open day." So, maybe that's why we don't get much about water in this document. Finally, at all the meetings I went to, I said that the important thing in the strategic plan is to improve the quality of life in the city in general, not just through public services, but in terms of what makes it, what ways in which you can enhance it. And as you might expect, I was suggesting that support for the Sierra Madre Playhouse or for cultural organizations in general might be one of them. There's no reference to any of those comments made in this document, and of course, it's been ignored in the final one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Madam Mayor, we have no other speaker cards, nor did we receive any emails in the city clerk's office.
Okay, thank you. So, I will bring it back to the council for discussion.
Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Starting from the beginning or going down, or what are we deciding to do?
What would be most effective for you, Management Analyst Carlson, in terms of getting feedback? I know that you received a detailed set of comments that you said that had been, perhaps had been incorporated. So, I don't know that we need to revisit those. I don't know if it would just be helpful just to go sort of section by section and discuss?
Well, I would actually appreciate, we'll go section by section. We'll go quickly. When I do come across one of those comments that I have received, they're general and they're minor. I would like to get consensus from the council to make them formally into the plan.
If I may, just kind of, one overarching thing that I'd like to see throughout the document is asking ourselves, when do we know when we've hit the action step, right? So, you know, to me, it is like, how have we achieved it and when will we achieve it? So, that was, a number of the comments that I provided were kind of those types of things throughout. So, I'm going to say it now, and then we don't need to say it time and time again. So, if we could just, you know, as we update it going forward, have that in there, I think that would be really helpful. Because that way, when we look at it, when we do the update, we know we've actually gotten there. When, if it doesn't have a time or a, you know, an achievable goal, then we'll never get updated on it.
Right. No, and that was the majority of the comments provided by Mayor Pro Tem Parkers, was to, you know, set a target date and to maybe provide a little bit more detail and specifics on a certain item. That's where I will go back to that department and kind of say, "The City Council wants a little bit more on that. We want a date. We want a little bit more detail." And that will be incorporated into the final draft or the final plan.
Or the first update, maybe?
Sure.
I mean, I hesitate if we're going to act on this tonight. I mean, we could obviously postpone action, but if we were to act on this tonight, I'd like it to be what it is. And then I think, you know, that's a great suggestion, and I think that's correct. That's how we're going to measure, you know, progress. And I would say on that, on that point, I mean, and folks feel free to jump in if they disagree. I think those target dates and details should be infinitely reasonable. I would much rather our departments be realistic about what they can achieve and what timeframe, and set realistic timeframes. And we can, you know, honor that versus feeling rushed to do things because we want to start checking things off a list as being done. That's my preference. You know, I know that there's lots of things that, you know, we'd like to do tomorrow, but we also understand the limitations that we are under, both budgetary and staffing and lots of other priorities. So, anyway, that's just my, that would be my direction, is that, you know, when you go back to them and say that we'd like more detail and we'd like a date, I don't think the message should be that we need it to happen this fiscal year or next week, or, you know, whatever it is. It needs to be, you know, reasonable for the nature of the goal.
That's a point well taken, and I really, thinking back, I don't think any of Pro Tem Parker's comments were substantive enough to really have an argument or anything here at council tonight. They can be, they can be updated. They can be changed and brought to... What I would like to do is in April meeting, get back onto that January, April, and do it like that. Because I do really like the idea of the January major strategic plan review.
I like that, too.
And I'll add to the mayor's comment is that, you know, there's a lot of stuff in there that's Q1. Q4 is fine for some of these things. Like, it doesn't have to be, like, I'd like to see progress, but let's make sure we're thoughtful and measured in what we're doing. It doesn't, it's not, we don't need to do this at breakneck speed. Let's think longer term. Let's think strategically.
Well, and I think I mentioned this briefly in the staff report. A lot of what I found the strategic plan is based on is capital improvement, project discussions at the budgetary time. And I received so much good information from the public outings that we did, but just to find the discussions among staff and among the departments about the priorities of capital improvements, based on what they're getting from the city manager and/or the city council, really helped me fill in some of these action steps. So, that will be coming soon as well for April.
Great.
You know, and I think that January date is very important because it doesn't, it prepares for budget season, but it doesn't bleed into budget season.
I like it.
So, I think that's very important to, so finance knows what's coming or what's anticipated to come. I think that's vitally important. So, I think instead of tying it to the fiscal year, if we tie it to the calendar year, it's probably... I don't want to take Finance Director's words, but I would think that it would be better for you to have preparation for the budget season.
And I think I would say it just slightly differently. I think that we've heard feedback that having priorities set to guide the budget process has been helpful in the past. So, that if the city manager and staff knows that the priorities of the council and the priorities of the city are X, Y, and Z, then that can be the focus of the budget versus, you know, sometimes I think people want to do a lot, which is commendable because we have people here who want to do lots of great things for our city. But, you know, again, with the limited resources, that focus of, "Here's the strategic plan. We just updated it to have these priorities." And that, I think, can help guide that process in a way that might make it, you know, more streamlined.
And I don't want to derail the way, we're going to go through this, but I think from my perspective, when I look at this, some of them might be horse before the cart. So, we talk about finishing the library, building out the police department, building out the fire department. But I, and there was also discussion about CIP and, you know, the capital improvement plans, but I didn't see a specific discussion about potentially looking into sources of funds. I think that's vitally important. I know we've been fiscally responsible. In corporate finance, what you try to do is align your life of your asset with your financing. So, you don't, you don't do operations with a bond, and you also don't use your revenue for long-term capital improvements, right? That's just, you shouldn't do it that way. So, I think we, since we don't have a lot of borrowing and debt, I mean, we should probably look at... look at, not necessarily bond issues, but potentially, what's, what's the best way for the city on an ongoing basis to fund cap, large capital improvement projects? Because we can't always rely on a $10 million grant from the state.
Or ever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
See, like, under organizational stability, so, yeah, organizational stability, goal two.
Maybe I missed it.
Well, I know, I actually, it's an honest question. It is, I'd like your opinion on build on fiscal stability. Do you see that as, is that the place to put it, or do we need to have another, another place? Because this actually references a little bit of Mr. Gordon's comment as well. And so when he had that comment, I went and looked, and I said, "Maybe that's the right place for it?" And I'd be, I'd be curious, because I think it fits under organizational stability, because we can't have an organization without funding.
You're talking about strategy 2.2?
Well, just goal two. So if you go up just to the top of that.
Right, but 2.2 is develop and maintain long-term financial planning.
Ah, thank you. Even better. Yes.
Well, I guess the way I also thought about it is in terms of coming up with some, you know, some dates or targets, I also felt like some of this stuff could get broken into pieces, right? And so when you go back to the departments, it, you know, it might be that we have a goal that's kind of the end goal, but it's going to require, you know, however many steps up to that point. And one of those steps very well, very well might be, you know, how are we going to pay for this? And, you know, what's the, the long-term, you know, sustainable funding for this? Like, if, if it is about staffing or whatever it might be. But it strikes me that some of these things are, you know, you know, build, you know, building out the, the police department is not something that's going to, is going to happen by Q2. And so that's going to require some sub-steps, and maybe that's what some of this update will be, is like, these are the steps we're taking to get to that goal, and certainly financing would be.
Yeah, and I just want to, I just want us to like, maybe think outside of the way we've been doing it, because it seems as though historically, we've been, we've been, we can take water, for instance, we've been taking revenue and meeting our capital improvement needs with revenue on a, on a budgetary process on an annual basis, rather than biting off big chunks with maybe a different revenue source, if that makes sense. And it just, yeah, I think that's, that's clear enough within that section, because it talks about maybe a five-year CIP in discussing sources, but sources don't always have to be revenue. I'm not trying to say we should, you know, take a whole bunch, whole bunch of debt for the city. I'm not saying that. But I'm saying we should carefully and thoughtfully look at those revenue sources.
Does it make sense to take this organizational stability portion and put it at the beginning? Because if we don't have organizational stability, like, kind of everything else crumbles in my mind. If we don't have the finances, if we don't have the people, you know, it doesn't matter whatever, all the rest of it is. You know, we, I think the previous agenda item helps underscore that, right? We do not have a construction management firm here, and so we have to find, you know, the, the financial and the people resources before we can implement anything. And so I wonder if we should be putting that first.
Or is it that city's, your first responsibility to your public is public safety and utilities like them? Is that why it's situated first with?
I think you can make an argument either way on it, and so I think it's, that's why I threw it out for discussion, because, because you're right. It's, you know, the order at some level establishes our priorities, and, you know, having it, you know, maybe having it last isn't, you know.
Because you're asking the questions up there, what's going to?
Yeah.
Well, I would hope that the whole document is taken seriously from front to back and not, not the, the first few pages are the ones we're going to focus on.
But, but order often indicates, it indicates, you know, some level of importance, right? And so, yes, I don't think that anything should, shouldn't be there, but I think, you know, we've, we have a council, at least in my time on council, have really focused on the fiscal responsibility, right? I mean, that's, that's one of the things that was very important to me when I ran was, is that there was so much work had gone in to getting us on a stable financial footing that I wanted to make sure that we continued on that while we were trying to do the other things.
I agree a hundred percent. I like to see it in the beginning of the document, too, for that reason. Couldn't have been any better.
Can we ask if that's why?
Go ahead, no, no, please.
Can we ask if that's why, how things were prioritized or organized was based on priorities of the city?
In my best recollection, I don't believe they were placed in order of priority. I think they just kind of evolved. I think public safety was first because there was a lot of consensus on what we wanted to do there, where we get into community enrichment, it was a little bit more fluid, what does that really mean? I think it's, as far as I can recall, that's how that list was propagated.
I have no problem moving things around if we think, I mean, especially since I do agree that organizational sustainability is kind of an umbrella.
It's an umbrella, yeah.
It's an umbrella, you know, chapter, and so I think, you know, I think it would foresaw some of the questions, you know, like, if you'd read that first, and then you sort of go into like, and we need a new public safety building, and, you know, it sort of dovetails, because there is a lot of overlap.
And it, and it probably is a, is a better nexus between our mission, vision, values as well, and so everything follows after that. Another, another question. So I think this is kind of responding to Mr. Gordon's comment. Remember when we had that first meeting in the EOC, now the EOC? I seem to recall a document that was provided from the consultant. Should that be within this? And that might answer some of the questions we discussed as an executive and council? Or is that something that we don't think would? I can't remember the form of it, if it was something we would want within our strategic plan as an appendices, but it, maybe it would be helpful in answering some of those questions? Because I think, from what I recall, it recapped a lot of the discussion that we had. It was an open meeting, but no members of the public showed up.
You're saying that the readout from the meeting, like the report that he did? I think, I feel like there were like graphics, maybe, and?
Was it a consultant for?
It was.
I wasn't there.
There was a consultant, yes.
But what was it consulting? Like, what? I have no idea what it was.
Like, putting together a strategic plan process.
Okay.
So I'm happy to incorporate that in the appendix. I think what he provided, we built on through the community outreach. But yeah, I'm happy to incorporate that.
Yeah, because those, I mean, those, those things were discussed, and those things were discussed in an open, public meeting, but, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't filmed, so a lot of people don't know what was discussed. And I think that kind of, it did guide our, our town halls, absolutely.
And I think going back to the, the comment about organizational stability and environmental responsibility and where they, where they landed. Traditionally, we focused on public works, or public safety, public works, and community services. And I think this is the first time that the council has said, "We're going to look at investing in our, in our, in our people." And so that component was added. And then we also wanted to look at being environmentally responsible, so we added those components. So it wasn't any particular order, it was just, historically, it's public safety, public works, community services. This is the first time that we're saying, "We value those things, but we also want to make sure that we take care of our, our human capital and our environment."
I like adding the, any references to consultants that we use, because it validates why we're spending money. Like, if you, if I didn't know, I had no idea you had a consultant prior, so I wouldn't know where this exactly came from. And if I saw that we'd spent money on a consultant of any type or any type of resource like that, I think it validates, one, the work that you've put into this, and why we spent the money. So I think that's, that's important.
And I'm looking at the notes that I took from that meeting, and so a couple of things. You know, when we looked at critical issues, the first thing we listed on the critical issues that I noted down was, was fiscal planning. The fist, the first thing under reach consensus on strategic goals was financial stability. So that was kind of the first thing that came, that we were, that I noted down on the conversation, and afterwards, it was, you know, staff stability, public safety, environmental sustainability. So I think that, that echoes the conversation. And I think the other thing in this, this, you know, also would help respond to Mr. Gordon's comments is that we had a conversation of the strengths and challenges. So we mentioned it here, I echo what my fellow council members are saying, is that, that report, I don't remember that report, and I can't find it here, but at least in my notes, we, you know, I had categories of those, those conversations, so you can see how that, how it evolved, and I can see how in the public, you know, they don't, it's not there. And so I think that that, that'll help, you know, crosswalk the whole process, so people can see how we got to where we are.
I don't think we want a page flip.
Really?
But I, but I think, but I do think we could just maybe go, you know, category by category, and if there's anything that someone wants to raise in that category, you know, we can talk about that. But I, you know, I don't think it's, it's a good use of our time to live edit. We've done that, and it was very important at the time, but I don't know if we need to do that for every document.
No.
So I'll just start, I mean, we'll start.
Went until 2:00 in the morning.
Yeah, exactly.
Details, details.
Yeah. So yeah, I'll just go, we'll just go through in the order that it's presented. Public safety.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
So in, in the, "Provide excellent fire service," I think one of the things I'd like to see, you know, Captain Bertrand has done such a good job of looking at wildfire, and I understand that he's working on a regional community wildfire prevention plan. I'd love to see that included in here and that, but that, you know, whenever he thinks he can get to that, I'd love to see that included.
Is that 3.1?
Is 3.1?
Goal three, manage outdoor environment. Fire department will assist, for public works department will hold brush clearing events, and then we'll hold a fire home hardening presentation annually. A lot more, probably a plan.
I think C, I think C would be the plan, right? I mean, A is the, the brush clearing, B is the home hardening, and then I think C would be like, you know, working on the plan.
Which he said he was working on, so maybe just include that in here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I, I, I would refer to our chief, our fire chief, to make sure that that's, that that is included in that. If it is, and he just nods, fine. If, if he wants to add comments, I'd be happy to hear those.
And from our discussion with Cal Fire in LA County, there were, there were two different, was it fireside council or, I forgot?
Oh, yes. See, I think adding some of that in there.
I think, you know.
Would that be part of the plan? Would that be in the plan, though?
I think that would be part of it, like, implementing that and make, going to the communities and make, and it's all, you know, for the residents, it's like a neighborhood watch.
I was going to have a gym guys, but.
Right? So, but it also opens up to more grant opportunities if we have those.
Right. And that was the other thing that, as you started talking about, that made me think about, and maybe it's, I don't know where we put in the funding, but that, you know, that to me was, was part of the whole plan, so I don't know how we, I want to make sure that we don't like micromanage the process, but also we know enough to know kind of how to, where to dig in and where to, to pull out the, the great things that the fire department's working on.
Yeah, I mean, at least like organize, one of the action goals would, would be to organize, organize these throughout the communities, because we only have to have one in the city, actually. It seemed, that's what I, what I heard.
Fire safe council.
Fire self-council, yeah.
And then, and then fire wise.
Yes, which is under the fire safe council, yes.
I mean, I would be fine if we wanted to add the plan and the councils were part of the plan. I think, I think we could, we could probably umbrella it that way. I'm also, I was also going to agendize the fire safe council.
Okay.
So, you know, we can do that as well, that way as well.
Chief?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. More than happy to pace this out or piece it together, however, however the council sees fit. One of the suggestions that I may have, if you wouldn't mind entertaining, is, I know the fire department, we have our own strategic plan that is a little bit more detailed than this. My thought process and knowing and working with Management Analyst Carlson is probably a more high-level view on the city's strategic plan, allowing the departments to get into their own strategic plan and break it down into more detail. Because there is going to be a lot of strategies, a lot of goals, and a lot of action items that are broken down to members of my own department, where if we did it on this, that document, once we get through the whole city, is going to look really long.
Great point.
So that is kind of my suggestion, how I envision this kind of rolling out. Absolutely, funding resources, things like that, I think should be incorporated in here, and then leave it up to the department heads of how are you, how are you going to manage that on your own side, and what is your strategic plan for your department? At least that's my thought process.
I think there's just a lot of excitement about this, this initiative that Captain Bertram is spearheading, and so I think that's what you're seeing here, is that, let's put it here, because, you know, there's just a lot of excitement.
And I absolutely think so. I would, if you, if, like I said, if you would entertain, I would recommend that we put in there basically a community risk reduction, and leave it up to us to try and figure that out, for lack of better terms, to be honest with you. It, it is just something high-level that gives you, as the council, the idea of, hey, we're working on it, please report out on it, please show us what's going on, and have, have the, the answers of where we're at. And if that's going to be quarterly, or whatever the case is, we can come in and do that, but it.
Then I would think that strategy 3.1 would be broader. Right now, it's maintain hillside areas. I think enhance, you know, enhance community fire safety would be a broader, a broader goal, and then you can, you know, that would obviously include maintaining hillside, it would include this plan, and then, and that way you, you have broader discretion as to what that looks like.
And I also think it gives us more flexibility as well, as was spoken to earlier, on how are we going to present updates? If we keep it as a broad topic of community risk reduction, and maybe we can get some funding from the state, maybe that falls through. But we're still looking at ways to doing that, whether we can start up a fire safe council, again. We have had one in the past, it has been on my, on my to-do list, but again, it's just one of those things. So I think, again, a broader stroke, if you will, for the, the city's strategic plan with underlying departmental strategic plans on how we're going to break it down and really accomplish it.
So I think to that point, you know, goal three dash one B is too specific. I think that should be possibly replaced with that community engagement sentence that you, that you brought up.
Again, that would be my suggestion. I know, I know we worked on this quite detailed, and I, and I think what our attempt here, if I'm not mistaken, is to try and get the feedback of what we're trying, what we're actually conversing about right now. Do we want detail? Do we want the broader stroke or what have you? But.
So how would you, you know, like, I'm trying to think through it. I love the idea that you have a more detailed plan, like, and we don't need to get into all of the detail on a quarterly basis, but if we think forward and we have that quarterly update, and we have something in this plan, how do we get to something where we have something that's time-based and clearly, a clear deliverable? Like, because there's a lot of detail in that plan, like, how do you, do we do a percent complete? Do we do a, you know, first, the first quartile, the first chunk? Like, I leave it to you to kind of think about that, but what I really want to be able to know, when, when that quarterly update comes, and James gives us, or Analyst Carlson gives us that, that update, that we can look at it and say, "Here is, here is public safety, it's green, and it's, you know, it's achieved, you know, these goals." And that, and we can, and we can look at the goal and say, "Okay, we can hear the little update, and we, and we're good on it," and there could be a whole lot down below it, but, but I'd like to be able to at least know, okay, we've got a manageable chunk that that we're, that's, you know, clearly we see the progress being made.
Absolutely, and I think that's something we probably have to kind of talk over and stew about ourselves on, what are the smart, the smart goals, right? They're going to be time-sensitive, they're measurable, or whatever the case is, and we have to have that to know that we've accomplished, and we're absolutely right. I think that's probably something that we, they're going to vary depending on what that goal is. Some of them are going to be, you know, maybe an increment of a number or a percentage, or it's just a yes or no, it got accomplished.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we.
I mean, it seems to me that a lot of the goals themselves are long-term aspirational things. Like, we are never going to not have community risk reduction as a goal. Like, I mean, you know, it's never going to be complete, because we are going to constantly be vigilant and constantly be doing whatever we need to do to, because we're never going to eliminate the risk. So it seems to me a lot of the goals are kind of in that, like, you know, effectively enforced codes. You know, these are, these are not, these, you know, the, the goals themselves or the strategies are not, you know, measurable in that sense, that it's really these sort of action steps in, in, underneath. And so if we say to you, you know, we have a, a strategy of community risk reduction, you're going to come to us and say, "Oh, you know, we looked at this grant application, we thought, we're looking into the fire safe," whatever, whatever it is, and you're going to tell us, you know, what that quarter's, you know, progress towards, you know, maintaining and you're gonna tell us, you know, what that quarter's, you know, uh, progress towards, you know, maintaining the risk reduction goal is. And I think that, that to me sort of provides your flexibility.
And maybe to help answer, I, rethinking this, right, is, is some of that would be like we've done in the, in the past few years for sure. You know, we're holding our chipper days and Green, Greenways and Chipper Days, i- if we've scheduled six of them, we've accomplished that, we've got those through the year. We did, uh, community educational components with, for wildfire, um, through the Cal Fire Grant. And we actually had to report out on that, so we, you know, we did six of those for the year. So I think those would be the, the measurable things, or the task under there is we will accomplish X number of events and that will be a, that would be a check, but that will be more detailed on my, on, on behalf of my department.
I think that's right.
And, and that's, I mean, that, to me, that makes a lot of sense, like, like at some level, as long as we have, kind of, we, we see the progress being made and, and get the updates and the, and the public is getting that, I think that, that makes a lot of sense. So, you know, it, um, yeah, so I'll stop there, yeah.
What do you think of incorporating, like what I said before, when we use our resources and funding for, um, reports and from outside third-party, uh, reports and, and analysis? What is your take on using that in the strategic plan or like setting a goal for you, like, well, we gave you this report and we, we paid for this, should we, I mean, I think should we set a time when we're like, okay, we would like to see your analysis or implement of that? Or else why would we spend money, why would we spend money on that, that, like, how did it incorporate into, um, feasible goals? Like, do you think that would be worth putting in, like, if, if you get your report by June? Would, could that be incorporated in, um, like, planning for the next future, it says future years, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five years? Could we incorporate that in there? Would that be appropriate?
I, I think those are great questions as well, um, you, as we are undergoing our master plan, um, development and the review. Um, for me, that's going to potentially highlight some, some opportunity for me to add to my strategic plan. But also I, I'm going to hope that as a department head is gonna validate some, pretty much everything I have in my strategic plan from a non-biased third-party entity that's saying, yeah, I see the same things that you're seeing, here's where you can prioritize them. But then again, um, the word is, is a live document, this, it's going to change. The priorities of the city is gonna change, the priorities of council is gonna change. Um, and so that's why you will see dates on these as well, right? This, this could be the strategic plan for twenty-three, or twenty-four, twenty-five. And then we need to look at it again. Um, so the, the reports that, that we're undergoing right now, the master plan, I, again, that's gonna help validate a lot of the stuff that I believe we have going on in our department strategically. And then potentially just enhancing things that maybe I didn't think of that might be an industry standard that they've come up with, oops, excuse me, from, um, working with other departments, so.
Do we normally put things like that in strategic plans, the use of, of these resources? Use getting their master plan, fires getting their master plan, is that normal to, to state the use of those or? To me, I just feel like we should validate using that much. Why we set these goals? Like, we set these goals because we have input, not just from ourselves.
The, the, if I may, the, the validity of paying for a consultant to do particularly like a master plan, that's gonna be another living document as well. That again will help us, uh, go out for resources for funding. We'll be able to show, we have these plans in place, both master plans, strategic plans, everything in place. We have thought about this strategically and here's why we're seeking these funds.
So, so what I'm hearing is this master plan, some of it is aspirational. Not, things that are not necessarily funded or we don't have it, having, some of that will come back in that. So to say everything's actionable now would be maybe premature and not, not attainable on, on that master plan?
I'm going to say everything, there's definitely aspirations in there, uh, for instance, remodeling of the public safety facilities. Definitely aspirational and needs to get done, um, but as we discussed a little while ago, where do we get that funding from? If it's, and for me, if it's down in the documentation, then we have that ability to now go out and seek these grants by saying, hey, we've done our research, we've done our due diligence by collecting the data and the information that supports our claims. Um, and so, yes, aspirational, but I also believe they have to be viable somewhere down the line. Or why do we, why are we even thinking about them?
Yeah, I'm, I'm envisioning things-
Prioritize them.
Like, you know, build a structure where we can actually train within a structure on a piece of property, but, but that doesn't exist right now. Um, but probably should, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Management Analyst Carlson, like, one of the things I'm thinking about is on the strategy level. Like, like, to me, what I'm hearing out of a lot of this conversation is, is that, um, you know, we could, we could spend all night, you know, talking about the different action item steps in here. But if we're looking at this as a strategic plan, if we take just, you know, two steps back, you know, the first step back is the strategy and the second step back is the goals, like, to me, I, I, I think it's worth all of us looking at this and thinking about this, are these the right goals and strategies? Because at the end of the day, those goals and strategies, to me, like, are, are they ongoing? Are they really part of our strategy? Are they really part of the direction we're headed? And then the action items are, are gonna help us get there, right? Is that these goals and strategies, like, providing excellent fire service, we are never going to stop wanting to provide excellent fire service, right? And, and, and part of that is achieving optimum sta- staffing. So we're gonna, we're gonna wanna make sure we have staffing for it. And then the action items is, okay, what are we doing to make sure we've got that staffing? So in my mind, like, when I look at this, I could spend all the time in the world, like, burrow down, and I, often I do that, burrow down into the details of it, but if I take a step back and going, are these go- goals and strategies right? Good, then, then, at least we know, that's, that's, you know, that's our, our, the heading that we're on, that's the direction we're taking, that's the, you know, the destination we're headed towards.
Uh, to that, I think you come into the, the whole concept of taking a snapshot of the strategic plan is where it's at. All of these goals were derived at the beginning, maybe they're all not still the best goals. Um, but we have to take a snapshot and go somewhere. At our quarterly updates, I can see both staff recommending an amendment, an elimination, an addition to any of these goals with council's, you know, input, perhaps council comes up with something that staff wasn't thinking of too. But what you're seeing right now is just, we have to take a snapshot and go forward.
I mean, to that end, I just did a quick flip through of all of the sort of strategy level ones. And honestly, I, I honestly think the one that we're talking about, which is this, you know, the strategy three point one under, um, provide excellent police service, or sorry, no, ma- manage outdoor environment, is the only one that feels narrower to me than, than most of the other ones. And I, I really think that the conversation we just had about broadening it to something in the line of, you know, community risk reduction or, you know, striving for, you know, risk reduction, fire risk reduction, just creates a broader umbrella. And I, and that's really the only one personally, that I think sort of doesn't, the rest of them already kind of fit that kind of overarching, you know, structure as you were saying, and then having sort of specific action steps underneath.
And, and the community risk reduction, because I see strategy three two managing human and, uh, wildlife and human interaction. If we keep it a community risk reduction, it, it, that still falls in, uh-
I guess I was thinking community risk fi- I, I guess I was thinking specific to fire, so community fire risk production, we were talking about, which is what-
Yeah, three point one is wildfire, three point two is wildlife. I get them mixed up all the time, but they're both under outdoor environment.
It's woo wooey.
Yeah.
So that would be my only suggestion and I'm not married to it, if, if you wanted to just keep it as it is, I'm fine with that too. On that note, is there anything else that folks wanna talk about, kind of at a, at a high level? I, I do agree that I don't think we need to get into, you know, OS one point two, A one, three.
I, I guess, you know, i- i- if I'm looking at, at the first, that overall first section, going down to PS, strategy PS four point two, encourage active modes of transportation. Just a question is, I don't know this, if this has come before the transportation committee and gotten the feedback of, of, you know, people like Max and John Lloyd and others on it. And, and maybe that would be worth, um, I know we've got an agenda, we can't, I mean, we may not be able to change that, but maybe the next transportation committee, have them take a look at this and provide feedback? There's just a lot of really thoughtful people in that room that, um, I think could, could help. And, and maybe even four one is the same one because it's, uh, traffic pattern, patterns and flow.
Uh, thank you, Pro-Tan Parkers, there's, there's something that, um, is not included in this at this point because, um, it's just hasn't been developed yet, but there's a, there's a concept of continuing the local transportation subcommittee into, into other areas of expertise. I wasn't really comfortable putting that in yet before it's vetted a little bit more, but this is along the lines of what I believe you're thinking. Whereas they may continue beyond just local transportation as a group of one sort or another to help with active transportation. I don't know if you noticed that, um, I am suggesting wrapping, circulation, public safety, bike racks, active transportation, community forest plan, community sidewalk plan, all of that into what I'm deeming a comprehensive right of ways plan. Because part of that is I'm just kind of getting spider-legged with all these different concepts that are gonna have to talk to each other. And that was kind of my offering within the strategic plan to approach those subjects.
So I guess my thought is, is less on, on the contents, more on the process? It, it, it is more like running it by the people in that room and seeing like, does this kind of fit what we've been thinking about, what we've been talking about? Like, you know, we, we don't, do we need to include something in here about bus routes and bus lines? And, cause is that a long-term str- strategy of having mobility around it? Is that, is that part of the managed traffic patterns and flow or is that something different? But, you know, we've, we've spent months focused on this and, 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 and just thinking about it here, I don't see, I don't see that fully reflected.
Well, we'll write it, yeah, I can, uh, I got a meeting tomorrow, maybe I'll show them. We can, I think they'd be really interested to tell you the truth, I think it, it would be a good discussion.
I think there's a lot here and there's a lot that we can, we are doing and can do, and I guess I'm just sort of personally of the, of the, my feeling is that we should, unless we have serious issues, we should consider adopting this as a guiding document, understanding that it is going to change and that the detail really is in the implementation, not in the words on this page. So I, I, I don't know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna cut off discussion, but I also feel like we just, we sort of need to just have a plan, start working with it and then it'll, it'll also morph as we start implementing, you know, certain of the goals.
I just have one question about all this, because I, I'm pretty much in agreement with what I've heard. So we have all these objectives and we have goals and we have action steps. And I see, I, I look at the objective, I say maintain a safe, secure community, that's something that can be measured. So why aren't we talking about a way, uh, metrics to make sure that these objectives are actually being reached? Well, why is, can we, can we add that in here somewhere? Cause just taking action steps, it sounds great, it's, it is good, maybe it hits the mark, maybe it doesn't, but it seems like ra- rather hell-mell kind of, well, for instance, I mean, improve communication and collaboration, create city information hub to encourage, well, how are we gonna measure that? How do we know if there's more collaboration or not?
No, that's, that's a good point.
And how does that benefit, how does that benefit the strategic goal, strategic objective to promote unparalleled quality of life with an engaging collaborative culture? These things are so nebulous to me, that's why I'm having real, being able to sink my teeth into it, because I like to see outcomes and particularly measurable outcomes. So when we talk about safety of the city, for instance, we can talk about have we improved safety of the intersections of our city? Because we've had a lot of traffic issues in the city. That's something we can measure if we pursue it through strategic goals and action steps, right?
So, so that one, you know, we get an annual update from-
Right.
From police and fire.
Right.
But we, maybe we wanna set it-
It's not mentioned here.
It's not mentioned here, yeah.
Yeah.
And, but-
There's virtually no, there's virtually no measurement of outcomes here, it's all, it's all intentions, which are great, we have to have them.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm totally in support of that part of it.
And community engagement, we, we could, you know, they, they have data and metrics on, you know, how many, how many engagements, how many click-throughs and how many, you know, and if-
Exactly.
We want to increase that obviously, because we want to enhance the co- the quality of life here in the town.
We do that in the library all the time, they tell, we know exactly how many clients we have, how many people are checking things out, how many, how many people attended, right? So you can measure the outcome there, right?
Could, could you, if we look, if we go in and, and you jumped into the community enrichment and I think, I, I, I hear where you're going. So i- i- if we go to community enrichment, goal one, enhanced physical and mental health of residents. Like, is that, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, is, is that that one is, is, is very hard to, to, to figure out an outcome, but I'm comfortable with that being a goal.
Not, not impossible though, you, you can, you can get, you can get statistics on health and, health and wellness now.
And, you know, how many-
Community, and you see if people are getting healthy or less healthy.
How many, how many residents did chair yoga? How many went to the park to listen to music in the park for an outdoor activity? How many went to Huck Finn? I mean, these are all, I think they're all part of mental health and being outside and physical health. So those are ways that we can, we can easily measure them.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, the objective is great, I see the action steps are great, I just would like to see something tying it all, tying it all together, so.
No, I agree.
It's more meaningful to me as a policymaker, oh, look what we've done over four years' time, we actually made the city healthier, we made the city safer.
Yeah.
So would you say for each strategic except, eh, eh, each strategic objective, you'd like to have key performance indicators?
I would, I think something like that, I don't know if it has to be that.
Provide- At the goal, I would say more at the goal level, I mean, I, I just think like, there's sometimes the objectives are, are pretty high level, right?
They're very high level, right.
So I, so I'm wondering if maybe it's, 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 it's maybe one step down sort of more, more in the, at the goal level? Or, I mean, and some, in some cases, it might be more at the strategic level, I mean, sort of depends a little bit, that it's not as uniform, which is fine.
We're just a general agreement among the council that, hey, all these things that we have in here, without putting anything in, in terms of outcomes, will be measured as, if possible, given, given tech, tech, technological or, or, uh, the capability we have to measure, when, you know, over time, to see if the, the, the act, actions of the action steps are actually working or-
Yeah, I think-
What I like about your comment is, is that it already builds into a lot of the updates that we see already. I mean, you've already, you've already mentioned, you know, or, or I think the mayor said, you know, the number of people attending, um, uh, um, chair yoga or, you know, movies in the park or books checked out or whatever.
Leaks in the water system and, you know, things like that, it's all measured.
I think having that as part of this, and I, and I don't know if it's like, I, I think at the goal level it makes sense a- and then we see the actions helping to improve those statistics over time.
Yeah, and those would be annual reports, not quarterly, I would hope.
Yeah, I wouldn't want, this, even annual seems like almost too much.
Yeah, I, I would think that part of the discussions you're gonna have with the departments around updates is also figuring out how to report out progress, right? I mean, because each goal is gonna be a little bit different and each department's gonna have a little, I mean, some things are very clear, like, create, design, you know, d- public designs, like, that's a very objective, do we have ADU, you know, designs at planning? Like, that's yes or no, you know, like, like, like Chief Bartlett was saying. So, but some, but I think that's something that again, at a department level, you know, in, in April, we're gonna update on this and this and this is what we're gonna say is the measurement for, you know, achieving the goal or achieving the strategic objective.
If, if I might just get some feedback on that, I mean, the, the strategic plan was built with what I described as the latter concept. So you go from strategic objective to goal to strategy to action steps, each getting incrementally more detailed and time-sensitive. So I had no, or the staff had no intention of really having measurables up at the objective.
Right.
And then each time you go to a goal, we're a little bit more specific, and you can see that right here.
Yeah.
Strategy where action steps is, this entity's gonna do it by this target time. And that was the, the structure that we were proposing.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't think we're talking about changing that structure. I think what I heard, uh, Councilmember Goss say is, is, is a focus on outcomes.
Yeah, so for instance, can I just interrupt?
Yeah, please, it's your idea.
Yeah, you brought it up, uh, so CE two point one, C, uh, that's under goal two in the community service. Increase accessibility to community communications, including emergency communication, city events, major, uh, projects and cer- and, and general city programs and services. Okay, well, I'd like to see that outcome measured at some point, how much more accessibility do we get? How do you measure that? So I, I'm more interested in that progress report as a result of all these actions than I am all the actions. And I think you have to get the actions before you get the progress report, right? I, I'm just adding something on the tail end here, not, not really challenging anything in terms of your latter concept, I, I think it's right.
Because you're right, in that section, there are no dates, or like, in-
It's like, it's like, well, okay, we're increasing accessibility, are we or aren't we? I mean, how do you know that? I mean, so you have to find a, a metric to come and try to apply there to figure out if you're actually increasing accessibility communications or, I don't know how you'd do that, I'd leave that to staff.
And, and so part of that, it, it, to build on it, is that you could have like, you know, a certain number of emails that went out or a certain number of posts on, uh, on, on media or, uh, you know, the, the great, um, uh, things that are going to all households. I don't remember what, what we call it, the, 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 what do we-
Newsletter.
Was it a newsletter? What, what would you call the, the brochure that you sent out?
Village Vine, I mean?
No, no, this is, this is-
No, no, this is, this is the one that went to everyone's household that talked about, it's new.
The community newsletter is referred to as community news.
And that's new, isn't it?
It is new.
Yeah, and so that community news that, that went out, I mean, that's a new idea that went to all households. And like, even describing something on, on that, because it's something that, you know, I only remember that because I cleaned my office this weekend, right? You know, and, and I was like, oh yeah, this is great! Um, but having it here as one of the, uh, key performance indicators, I think helps us know, like, this is one of the things that, that was an outcome of that work of the communication.
I think to that point, like, if you measure how many people are, like, if you could say increase engagement in neprous, no, whatnot, um, what's the emergency, I'm getting late, the emergency, Genesis, and- No, what's the other one, though, that we have currently that we use all the time?
Smart nine one one.
Next, next, increase enrollment to, you know, this.
Yeah, how many more c- c- subscribers can we get, you know?
Yeah.
Now you, now you're-
AMI is another one, right?
AMI is another one, how many more AMI participants can we get?
More.
That's how you measure it.
Measurable.
I think to the mayor's point, I think this is where you were headed, is, is that, I, what I'm sensing from, from the council is, is that we all have, have, you can see the enthusiasm that's here, and we all, all are, want to see this implemented. And I think the, your initial comment on this of removing draft is one that I, I, I'll just test here. If I were to make a motion of, uh, uh, of adopting the draft and start the implementation with the comments from council, I think that, that may get, I mean, I don't know what, how much more would be helpful for you, uh, Mr. Carlson, but, but I think that we've given a lot for you to think about, and, and it, I think it may be enough for the first update.
Sure, and if, if you'll allow me just to run down a couple of the key points that I'm charged with. And make sure we have consensus, we're gonna put op- operational stability at the top, we're, we all agree on that. And then, uh, we're gonna add some of the documentation from the early consultant work into an appendices in the back, I think that's a wonderful idea. Um, we had a lot of discussion about the community, um, risk reduction area in the fire, and we'll, we'll do something with that. And then throughout, add more metrics and time targets into the action steps.
Can I back, I, I'm, I don't even wanna take it that far, I mean, I, I'd like to see something general in the document saying that that is the end goal of all the action steps in the document, some kind of, some kind of measurable outcome. And then leave it at that, let staff figure out in each case what that would look like.
And I think to be- I'll counter that, I, I'd like to see if we've got the action steps, I, I would like to encourage staff and, and to, to make it a, a, um, an expectation or, or a, a, um, a desire for all the action steps to have, to, to be, as, as Chief Barton said, to be smart, and to incorporate your part to have key performance indicators at the goal level. To me, those are, those are two different things, a- a- and they, one of them helps us measure when the action step is complete and we can take it off. And the other is, what's our outcome and how, what impact are we having? To me, those are two different and valuable things.
I'm, I'm trying to make it, like, doable for staff, at least at the first stage. But I'd, I kinda like to maybe give them some discretion here in how they interpret this. But I, I do agree with you, that would be my ideal approach to this.
And, and, and for me, I, I don't wanna put it a- as a, as an urgent timeline on it. To me, I, we can keep that as aspirational, and, and to your point, having staff come back when they think they can get, get to that. Because we already have staff that's working really hard, and, and I don't want this, I, I want this to be able to be something that is sustainable from a work-life balance perspective.
And, and I, I think the point of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're not, the council's not trying to do performance, uh, evaluations of staff. I think, I think the point of this is see if, hey, we're doing something, and is it working? And because we know that, we know that strategies become ineffective at times, and we need to train, change the strategy. So I think it's more of a, is this strategy working? It's not, oh, I'm not doing my job, and I, I'm not, not reaching these goals, it's not really a goal, it's, it's a metric to understand effectiveness.
Yeah, I almost think they would test it themselves, it's not, it's not a report out type metric. It's a, are, you know, is this the right action step to achieve this goal, is this the right goal? I mean, that, that, it's a way for staff to evaluate whether they've set the right goal and/or set the right action items to get there, not for us to create, like, percentage, percentage lines, like, Public Works is up here, but, you know, and so we, we're not, didn't do that.
I just wanna make sure that's clear to staff, that, that's not our goal here.
Well, and, and, and I'll even take it and go the other ways, it's like, you know, maybe there's some things where, like, you know what, we tried doing this, and it's not working, so why are we doing it?
Yeah, exactly.
That's the end part of it.
You know?
Because y- y- you assume that everybody's working really hard and doing lots of important stuff, and they are. But if we're not accomplishing objectives, maybe their time could be put into areas where, which were, where we could accomplish objectives.
Yes.
And they're, the only way they're gonna find that out is if they try to meet measurement.
Yes.
Metrics and, and fail. And then they can say, okay, well, let's not waste any more time and resources, let's go over here.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Yeah.
I would entertain your motion, Mayor Proten.
Alright. So, so, so my motion is, i- i- is to a- adopt a plan with the advice given to, to staff on, on, um, uh, long-term implementation.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I move to adopt the, the strategic plan with the advice, uh, to staff on, on long-term ongoing updates.
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We talked a lot, but we didn't change a lot.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, thank you very much, guys.
Nice, nice job, please, please, yeah, echo to all the staff, we know there's a lot, you know, this has been eighteen, nineteen months it's gone into it, a- and I really appreciate all the work.
Yes.
Agreed, very much. Okay, so any future agenda items? I will table mine, because it sounds like it's gonna be incorporated into something larger, and that's fine, anything else for future agenda?
I don't see why not, you don't just-
Yeah, I can do it. Okay, so I, well, just based on the, the meeting and the discussion we had with Captain Bertrand on Friday, I was very excited about this idea of local, community grassroots-based, um, Fire Safety Council. And I particularly liked the fact that having one might open, open some treasure chests for us. So, um, I would like to just, you know, nothing urgent, and can certainly be part of the larger master plan, um, with the, uh, the Fire Department. But that is something I, that I found particularly exciting. Also because we might be able to marry it or put it on a similar path, some of our wildlife, you know, watch-type efforts. And I, cause I suspect there's gonna be a lot of overlap in folks that are interested in both those areas.
And, and maybe it's not an agenda item, maybe this is just kind of something to talk about with city manager. But, uh, you know, during that meeting, we were discussing kind of a wooey council that was maybe dual-purpose, which would be wildlife management and wildfire, wildfire abatement issues. I don't know if, if those two go together, but it's the same, you know, same area, the wooey. So, I don't know if, if that's really an agenda item or not, but.
This should be part of the discussion, right? Like, what, what that, what the Fire Safety Council would look like would probably also morph, you know, also include, does that have a wildlife component as well, or is that separate?
To piggyback on, on the reports, then this would be kind of a separate agenda item. Could we also look at changing, not changing, um, enhancing our codes and sending to the Planning Department analysis of what we can do for our projects that are in the upper foothill? Because what they were saying LA County does is that they have to have, um, once their permits are done, once they have their, their code enforcer come to look at the property, sign off that it's complete, part of that is the abatement issues and the, and the hardening of the structures around. So they will not give them the all-clear to inhabit until those are taken care of. And so he, they noted some of those issues at some of our projects and some of our homes that are up against the foothill, that, that, that would not have been certified to occupy. So being able to have that extra, um, ability to enforce.
Incentive.
Extra incentive.
Specific to Stonegate, to be hon- yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
And, and these are things that were supposed to be, have been agreed upon already.
So this would be, uh, part of the permit approval process to make sure that there's defensible space prior to issuing of an occupancy permit?
And from what I understand, we don't have to, since Cal Fire is at a certain strictness, of course, and then LA County Forestry and LA County is the Cal Fire of our area, we can adopt Cal, I mean, LA County's, um, language already, and they gave us the codes that they use, and we could just adopt that as our city as well.
And they're even more strict than Cal Fire.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have one item that I wanna bring to council's attention to see if you wanna provide further direction. So I think staff is looking at the Planning Commission, expanding the Planning Commission, um, and we've heard from other commissions. Rather than have to come back, would council like us to survey all the commissions to see if there's any interest in other commissions, so that we can evaluate all of them at the same time? Or do you want us to look at each one individually?
The only reason I, I hesitate for two reasons, one, I was not the one who asked for the Planning Commission, so I, I'll defer to Councilmember Goss in terms of his, his, his thought process on expediency, cause that's my only concern, is that we've heard a lot of, um, feedback from the community specific to Planning Commission. And I know some of the commissions themselves have concerns, I, you know, I think, um, Councilmember Garcia mentioned the senior commission earlier. So that's only, my only hesitation, yes, cause you're right, that would be much more efficient to sort of do it as a comprehensive, um, review. But, um, I'm wondering if we, if folks think we need a more expedited, um, process on the Planning Commission, given community feedback, and given frankly, the relative, you know, weighty issues that the Planning Commission, um, reviews.
Uh, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, I don't see any problem with the other commissions.
I do.
Well, then I'll, I'll listen to that, I'll listen to what you think, we can't have, we can't have a debate now, though.
No, 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 but we were talking about, uh, and remember last time we talked about the wording, and some of them is how it's not really pertaining to current language, and how some of them are very wordy with, kind of with instruction of the purpose, and some aren't, and then why is there term limits for this one and not for that one? So I guess it's maybe consistency?
I mean, we had tried to do consistency before, so I think, I, I, I like the idea of biting it all off.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, yeah, then, yeah, I would, I would, I mean, for efficiency purposes, I'm also like, I also like streamlining things for staff, so I'm, I'm fine with doing it all together. Anything else? Alright, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Are, are you, are you, are you adjourning the open session and then-
Thank you.
Entering into closed session, or are you adjourning the meeting?
Yes, thank you for reminding me of that distinction. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the open session and reopen the closed session to continue our closed session from prior to the meeting. Second? Okay.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.